All county offices will be closed on Thursday, November the 22nd and Friday, November the 23rd in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. All county offices will reopen on Monday, November the 26th, 2018. The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following: The Roden Bridge Fabin's Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabin Street in Fabin's, Texas, 798-38. The Roden Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 798-35. And the Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas, 799-38.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the Northeast, West Side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coastrx.com. Happy savings.
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or a current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
That's not normal.
Good morning. Today is Thursday, November 15th, 2018. Commissioners Court is meeting in special open session.
Are we on air?
Are we on air?
Yes, sir.
We just need to put the switch because we have a little bit more check.
Yeah. Can you put the switch behind you, please, Pam?
I'm sorry?
Could you put the switch behind you?
You come, I'll put you right to work. There you go, that's okay.
Judge Brennan, would you like to get started with?
We can start with item four, please, and then we'll go down the list and we'll take items two and three last.
Item number four, and there is a correction to read in for the Elections Department. Item number four should read: Approve and authorize the El Paso County Commissioners Court to verify and canvass the precinct by precinct results for the November 6th, 2018 Uniform Election into public record. Texas Election Code Section 67.004.
Good morning. Commissioner's Judge Lisa Wise, El Paso County Elections Administrator. So the law requires that after an election for state or county offices, that the canvassing authority, which in this case is the Board, reviews the results and signs off on them, asking any questions that they may have. And then the results that need to go to the state are then will pass on to the state as soon as you guys have done canvassing. So if there's any questions, I know everybody got a very thick packet. That's to give you as much detail as you can handle. The summary really kind of, I think everybody got also a summary packet, I think it was about eight pages. This tells you the, this gives you the compilation of those pages that you saw. I'm happy to take any questions. Also, go ahead.
I'm sorry, can we shrink this on the screen?
Yes. Hold up control and then lock it down.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And I know generally you don't take action on Thursdays, so if we wanted to move to take action on Monday and just review today, that's fine. It's completely up to the Commissioner and the judge, however they think.
And Lisa, could you again just explain very briefly for the audience and for folks watching kind of what action this is, or even if we don't take action today and it goes on for Monday, what exactly this is that we're doing?
Sure, so there's canvassing that's done after every election, and generally it's the presiding authority. So the city took their results, the school boards take their results, and they'll have their board meetings and look over the results just the same way, like I gave you guys the big packets. They'll produce those large packets for their elected officials and their boards. They'll look over them. Basically what they do is they look at the tallies. I can give you an example, if you look at, let's just say the first race, which is the CISD Board at Large. And you look at the times counted, which is the votes counted, and those should add up with the tallies down there for every race. And that's basically what the system does, but then also they check the canvas for any errors or anything that they may see that doesn't match up.
And are we the last entity to?
You'll be the last entity for the county races. You are the only entity for the county races. Things like federal and state, then we will push those on to the Secretary of State's office. And then they will do the same kind of thing, look over the tallies. Obviously on election night, we submit tallies to them, that's how they get statewide race results. They will take the printout that we send them, they give us a form that we fill out on top, which is just kind of a quick cumulation of the races that go to them, Governor, Congress, Senate. And then they'll have their own state meeting of their canvassing board, and then they'll approve on that level. Once that's done, then the results are actually finalized. So it's a little bit longer process. And I don't know what that date is yet. As of this weekend, they had not set their canvassing date yet.
And is having this on the Monday agenda a hardship at all? I wasn't assured.
It's not going to be any different than kind of what, you know, we're doing here. So if you want to have it on the Monday agenda, because you don't want to, you know, fall out of pattern of taking action, I'm fine with that, we can handle that. If you are more comfortable with that, we're fine. It's going to be basically the same thing, you looking over the numbers, saying yes, these match, yes, do we have any questions, signing off, and then us pushing them on to the state.
Commissioners, we're about to know that we have not taken action on Thursdays, but I don't know if the Court feels comfortable with doing that today, or if you want to go ahead and just move this over to the Monday meeting. If I need to run, yes, Commissioner?
Lisa, there were a lot of absentee and provisional ballots, I guess, were really pivotal in some of the races this time around. Do you know how many provisional ballots were counted, I guess? Because I know the counting period took a little, or the tabulation period took a little longer, right?
So that, well, the tabulation is, as far as provisional ballots, by law, the voters have until Monday, the sixth day, until 5:00 p.m. to cure a ballot that required ID. And they have till 7:00 p.m. on the sixth day if they're military and overseas. So that date would have been Monday, the 12th, because it fell on a federal holiday and was pushed till Tuesday, the 13th. So everything was still counted. Anything that came in by 5:00 p.m. as far as needing to be cured, if they came and showed an ID, they were counted. If they were military and overseas, they had till 7:00 p.m. So as far as that goes, we still follow the exact same calendar. It's just sometimes if there's a federal holiday, it pushes everything back on that date.
So do you know how many provisional ballots, I guess, were actually?
So we had, I know specifically right off the top of my head in CD23, because we got calls about that repeatedly every day. We ended up having 76 turned in from Election Day. And I think those were accepted at a 41 to 35. And then we had 59 turned in, I'm sorry, the 71 was early voting, 59 on early voting. And we had about 30 some of those accepted. They usually come in at about a 50/50 rate.
Okay. And were there any major hiccups in the, like with, I mean, aside from long lines, but that's normal everywhere? Any major issues with voting machines or?
Nothing with the voting machines as far as tabulation. We didn't see anything like what we all probably read about a different vendor than the one we use out in some larger counties in Texas. But the machines, our biggest issues are legs breaking, the screen not working after it's been used for a long time. It's not in the tabulation side, it's in the actual just hardware of it. They're, you know, they're aging. So we would end up having to kind of, okay, the legs are broken, or this is broken. And we aren't able to get even replacement pieces anymore because they're not made anymore. They're old like that. So that was, that was the issue. We always kind of have some confusion on straight ticket because we have voters who believe that once they hit straight ticket, they also go back through and start to hit all of the races under straight ticket. Well, once you hit straight ticket, it populates those already. So when you go back in, it actually would take deselect that option. So once we kind of got, making sure that the poll workers are letting them know you don't need to go back in once you hit straight ticket and vote all those again. They think they're double doing it, you know, making sure, but actually they're not doing it correctly. So we had like a couple calls on that, but once we got that handled, really everything is kind of the same as any election, in my opinion.
As far as broken equipment, though, we did have, because of the age of our machines, there were several pieces of broken equipment, but yeah.
Yes, yes, yeah. And we, and I mean, I'll talk about that a little bit in my next presentation on the system. But yeah, we have tons of legs and tons of the privacy screens and things like that that just had to be set aside. And then obviously we rented, we had to rent new machines, but they're still, those are still 12 to 15 years old. So it's just kind of the, you know, an aging fleet, I guess, is what's happening with those machines. That was our, that was my biggest issue.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on something that Commissioner Brennan said. On the straight ticket, when they push the straight ticket, then they go in and start individually, does that undo the straight ticket?
What it does is it undoes that race. So you still can cross vote. Obviously, this is the last race right now according to the legislature that will have straight ticket. But so if you were to hit straight ticket and then go under there, and the Senate race was the biggest one because that's the first race under the Senate, they would say, okay, let's say they want to do straight ticket Republican Party. Then they would go down and hit Ted Cruz, and it would pull off that, it would deselect it, so then you'd have to go back in and hit it again.
So they're reversing their vote?
Correct. It's just like on a touchscreen, you know how if you touch it once, it fills it in? If you touch it again, it deselects. So once we really kind of, we put out there, we made sure, hey, make sure these poll workers are letting them know they're going to do straight ticket, they only have to hit it once. They don't have to go in and then double check. Unfortunately, the calls that we got, the calls that our office took, they contacted the poll worker before they cast the ballot, letting them know, hey, there's, it's, you know, deselecting this. They were able to show them, so they were still able to cast it the way they wanted to. And that's exactly what the voters should have done. And we told them, you did it, you actually did it perfectly, because what happened is, you got a question, you asked the judge, you didn't wait till after you cast it, and then we're not able to see what they're talking about if they do have an issue like that.
And Judge, my recommendation, because we have the department head here, this way we don't have to make, come twice today and the following day. My recommendation is that you just vote, because I don't think there's any controversy in our, the voting.
I'm okay with that as well, unless other members of the Court feel differently. Okay. So then I would make a motion to approve the precinct results for the November 6th, 2018 Constitutional Amendments and Uniform Election into public record.
Second?
And actually, the correction was that it's just a uniform election, it's not a constitutional. Commissioner Haddes?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Staub?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number five, receive an update and presentation on elections equipment, voting machines, and software for the Elections Department.
Lisa Wise, El Paso County Elections Administrator. So this kind of follows up to a couple things we were just talking about, which is our aging election equipment. This is not new, we've discussed this, I think, a little bit every year that I've been here. And nationally, it's obviously with, on the forefront of any sort of election reform comes with the idea of the new machines. So I'm just going to go down and answer any questions and talk a little bit about the system that our department feels, oh, okay. That our department feels would be best for the county's needs. So the system we have now was purchased in 2001, 2002 with HAVA funds, which was Help America Vote Act. It was in response to the Orby-Bush issue in Florida. The federal government got involved in elections, which generally they had stayed out of, to make sure there was some consistency and make sure states had funding that they needed. So right now, we have over 200 machines inoperable, and we lose between 20 and 25 machines in an election. We did rent machines for 2018, but again, those are, they have to be the same system, so again, those are old. There's not a, there's not a great number of relatively unused machines because everyone's in the same position. So in July of 2016, we started to talk about really getting a new system and starting to move forward on that. We received some demonstrations from vendors on possible election equipment. There was overwhelming support from my department, myself, from those who attended the demos to go with something that has a more viable paper trail, verifiable paper trail, the ballot marking device. Instead of the DRE, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the difference on those in a second. So the BMD, the Ballot Marking Device System, allows a voter to vote at any location. You still use the machine to mark your ballot. But it also produces a paper ballot for the voter to review before casting. The paper ballots are then kept with our other election, with our other election documents for 22 months. Now, because of this concern on having verifiable paper trails, which we see even now as states are still counting, there's been bipartisan legislation, the Election Securities Act, that has a component in there which is basically saying you cannot have a DRE system after 2020. I believe that is going to pass this year, it's got bipartisan support, it keeps moving through the channels of the committee. So assuming we want to go with ballot marking vendors, and instead of going to the DREs, which again, don't have the paper ballot, there's two vendors whose voting systems are certified here in the state, Hart Inner Civic and Election Systems and Software. In the prior RFP, which we did put out in 2016, thinking we might be able to move on it then, the reason we didn't was that then we had, then we heard that 2017, the Texas Legislature was going to have some requirements in there for vote centers and different machine, different requirements, and we wanted to make sure that we weren't stuck like some counties are. like some counties are now, who purchased DREs, and now when this legislation goes forward, are going to have to either retrofit at incredibly high cost or buy a completely new system, okay? So we were trying to kind of make sure that we didn't, that we didn't jump the gun on that. So just, I want to make sure that you understand, this RFP did not go to negotiation or award, because we thought there would be changes in the election code. But the quote from Hart was much higher than what we're being offered now from ESNS. However, the Purchasing Director wants me to make sure you understand that without negotiation and that award being given, we aren't for sure what that would have looked like. So here's, but I, but I can tell you this, some of the costs that are associated with the other vendor is the paper, which is going to be the largest cost on this, because it does produce the paper ballot. 20, 20 to, 20 to 25 cents per page with the other vendor, because their system requires a full-page ballot. ESNS is 10 cents, because they can use the 14-inch, the 14-inch paper. So there's storage questions on that, and there's also the cost of the paper. So this is the state of Texas's pricing for the proposal that you have in front of you. And I'm going to go through what these actual items are, so that we could, you can ask any questions if you do have any questions on those. The DS200, the DS450, the Express Vote Ballot Marking Device, which is the actual BMD, the Keyos, which is what we'll sit in, the DRE, which is allowed for curbside ballots only. So I know I said earlier that DREs was going to be forbidden, but they're, they're currently required in vote centers for curbside. The software, the election management software, beginning with year two, the maintenance of the equipment will come from our special revenue. So right now, we pay actually more to the company that maintains this system we have than what is in this, in this proposal. So right now, we spend $60,000, $67,240 for maintenance of the system we have. In their proposal, it would be the $51,000. If you take into account also what we're spending per election between 26 and 32 on rental, that would then offset the 73 on the maintenance for part of the system. So those actually come out to be about $1,000 difference on that side of it. So there's two options when we look at the, there's two proposals that are in your backup. One is if we stick with 145 sites, give or take one or two if they have to merge, the proposed cost is a little over $6 million. If we decide in 2019 that we do want to try vote centers and go down to 100 sites, the proposed cost is $5.7 million with, if we needed to rent to make sure that we had enough in all of those sites for the May of 2019, we can do that for $5.50 per unit, so for $27,500. That's if when we go into May, we don't know for sure what entities are going to be on that ballot. We don't know for sure if entities who call elections then cancel them, that happens often, especially with our smaller utility districts. So this would be if we had 145 sites, or if we have 100 sites. My suggestion is to go with 100 sites, because I do believe there's an interest in going to vote centers. And I believe that even having the rental fee, if we did have to have a countywide in May, was, is still a better purchase.
Lisa, before you move on, can you, for those that are listening and those that may not know, can you explain the difference between the polling precincts, which is the current system, where you go to your precinct on Election Day, and in early voting, you can vote anywhere, versus what a?
The countywide vote centers?
Yeah, vote center.
Sure. So, so the precinct, like you said, is what we have now, where you have your address, you have your assigned polling site. On Election Day, you can only vote there. During early voting, we all know that you can vote anywhere, it continues to increase in utilization. The vote centers, which is a program that the state of Texas now has, and there's counties that apply for it, it's a process. We would have public meetings, we talk about the selection criteria of the sites. And basically, you can go down to 65% of your full, the polling sites you generally use, which would have us around 97, I put 100, and they can go anywhere, a voter can go anywhere. Now, we, I know we still have some concern about people who, who really love to precinct vote. Obviously, when we look at those locations, if they're still getting incredibly high turnout, you know, we might want to keep those on. We can keep as many on as we want. We don't have to go, we can't go below 65%. But if we wanted to today, some counties stayed at 90%, and just basically got rid of ones that just absolutely didn't see any turnout on Election Day. And then if it's deemed, if it's deemed successful by the Secretary of State, you can go down to 50%. But it just depends on what the commission wanted, what the county wanted. Again, we wouldn't go anywhere below 65%, but you could keep as many as you, as you'd like. But again, then you can vote anywhere, you don't have to just only go to a precinct.
You know, a lot of this makes, the issue I have on Election Day is two points. One, we have a lot of sites literally across the street from each other. There is a polling site at Franklin High School and a polling site at Franklin 93 Center, which uses the same entrance. It makes no sense. And the issue I have is, it happens continuously every Election Day, I stand on corners for, for other people, as, I don't know where I'm supposed to go. It's, there are people who show up at 6:30 to the wrong site and can't vote, because they're at the wrong site. And some, some of these, I absolutely understand, I don't want to take away options for people to vote. There's no excuse for us to find people to hire, to work two sites literally next door to you. Some of it just doesn't make sense in any way, shape, or form.
And so that would be something that's obviously supportive of the vote centers. And that's an issue that we get, I mean, Commissioner Hagerty is correct, on Election Night, we get calls from frantic people at 6:30 who didn't, went to the wrong place. Or they'll think sometimes, just because they are supposed to go to their old place, or it's somebody who lives two streets away, goes to this location. And the lines are, you know, there's not a lot of rhyme or reason. We have 40 jurisdictions who draw their lines on that. And you may live in one mud district and your neighbor two doors down lives in another. And so you, you might go to this precinct and they might go to that. So there's definitely an argument for vote centers. I will tell you, every county in Texas that tried it out has not gone back to precincts, nobody's done that. But again, if there's kind of a, it's on a scale of how, of what you want to, how, how close you want to cut it to 65% and how close you don't. So that's something, obviously, that's not the discussion today as far as deciding if we want to go to vote centers. But when we look at this, this is what kind of the difference in those proposals is. We will start to actually lay out the calendar, probably in March, on setting meetings and getting everything ready. The deadline's in August. SOS doesn't let you know till September if you've been approved for vote centers, so that's kind of tight. Although I believe that unless there was some real controversy, generally, everybody is approved to try it for one election. And I think the constitutional amendment is the best one, because it doesn't, it's, you know, it doesn't get people, it's kind of what I would call a, just a real small change at a time incremental, until we get to a big election, 2020.
Commissioner Leon?
Lisa, we've discussed this before, but I, I want to keep it prickly. On those, when we've gone from 145 to 100 sites, are we eliminating as many schools as we can?
Yes, that's our first goal, is to eliminate as many schools as possible. And one is safety reasons, just because the schools don't really want us there in a lot of ways. Some schools love to have us, but, and I don't blame them. I mean, my kids go to a school where they have, you know, a very secure entrance every day, except on Election Day. I went and met with her, our, their principal, and just kind of said, well, how are we going to do on Election Day? You know, and on Election Day, the security's off, the system's turned off. They don't like to do that, I don't blame them. We also have an issue like with the city runoff coming up in December, where we have looked at Tuesdays to do the runoff, and in December, every single school, which is 90% of the districts, has a holiday program. We can't use the gym, we can't use the cafeteria, they've got family Christmas dinner, they've got, so I mean, we had to move it to a Saturday, because otherwise, we weren't going to have space in those buildings. And so schools, although there's one in every neighborhood, there's only really a handful that I think really serve as, as, as either the only option or a good option. But we are going to try and pull from at least as many elementary schools as possible, the parking is horrible there. And that's what a lot of, that's what best practices will tell you, that when you start to consolidate down, you want to get out of churches and schools. That's the first thing that they tell you to do.
And that's another argument why it's always better for these voting centers, because I think, I think ultimately, we need to complete and get out of the schools, for the same reasons that you just mentioned.
Right, and we are moving towards that. And there, there is a movement to also make the Election Day a holiday, either a school holiday, if it's still on Tuesday, or a weekend. I mean, there's, there's talk about that nationally, there's talk about that at the state level. We met with the legal team from the Texas Board of Education, they really want that to happen, at least to either use a day of, a day off. People always say, let's move Veterans Day to Election Day, it's very close. And then that way, you know, we don't lose another day. I mean, there's a lot of ideas out there, there're just none that have been totally solidified yet.
Oh, thank you.
Sure.
I have a question, yeah?
Regarding your on-need maintenance, you're currently paying maintenance on your contract?
Yes, we're currently paying maintenance on the system that we have.
All right, so I was looking for it and then see the amount, but I'll, I'll double check that. My, my concern was that there's, there's some clarification under the Texas Administrative Code about not looking at the Contract Service Fund when we're, when the commissioners fund your operations.
Okay.
So, and it says you can only fund for operating costs of, my question is, we may need to get the county attorney just to clarify, and there's a few of A.G. opinions, just to make sure, is maintenance truly an operating cost of your department? And to make sure that it's an allowable expense under, under that fund, that's all.
Okay, and we have, I think we've talked about that before, only with our poll pads, and then also with, we had another maintenance, and I know it was before Christina took over, it was, I talked with Lee about what that fund could be used for. And we did approve, or at least she thought that it would be fine to use that for our poll book maintenance, which is really, I think, you know, pretty consistent what I had.
And it requires the election administrator's approval to the commissioner's court, and it requires their approval, you know, and it requires their writing, but I just want to make sure we're all the same page, so that we don't get here in a maintenance that comes due, and there's a surprise on the budget, that's all.
No, I agree, I don't want that either. So.
And if I can add to the comment, this would be a budget issue for FY 2020, not 19. Initial purchase price includes the first year warranty and the purchase price, so this would be a 2020 issue, which I think is special.
But the first year of warranty, where is that being paid?
That's what the purchase, similar to what I did with the entire immunity, I think.
As part of the implementation, it's cost basically built in.
So that comes from the bond, right? I mean, that's the initial bond, okay, that's how I understood it, so.
I'd love to that by your team.
Okay, so I've talked a little bit about the options, which were ballot marking device versus DRE. Again, assuming that we want to go with the ballot marking device, I do think that's the smartest choice. And assuming that we want to go with this vendor, again, I still believe that's the smartest choice. I don't want to kick anybody while they're down, but I think we all saw the other vendor in the news a lot the last couple of months. And it does leave me with an unsettling feeling about election and their technology. I did not really like that system when we looked at it, and I haven't been convinced of otherwise. So I'm going to go through this, what the election systems and software vendor provides, and again, I'll ask, answer any questions if you have any. So the first part is the actual express vote. So everybody knows when they go to vote on the machines, there's the DRE, the face of the DRE. This is, would be the new face, okay? And I know on the slides, it's a little bit better on the TV than it is here. A couple of things, the University of Michigan and worked with, it's called Blind Bargain, they tested all of the new BMD systems in the state, and this was the only system they said that they would recommend for voters with disabilities, because it's basically a plug-and-play. It's already got the, the jack on the front for the sip and puff, as well as the headphones, and it, it's constantly running an audio ballot. So basically, the current system now, we have to burn a card and note on there, this is an audio ballot, so that it will actually read. This system, you plug it in, it's already, it reads no matter what, okay? It just assumes that somebody's going to be using that. It has the Braille on the pad, they said the pad was the best of the ones that they'd looked at. So that's the side for voters with disability. On the, on the actual process of the vote, you'll go in, you'll check in, just like you do any other election. If you're at a polling site where there's only one ballot style, then the ballot style will be on the top of that card. You can see there's kind of a barcode on the top of that card. If there's only one ballot style, you'll get that burned on there, you'll put your card in in the bottom black slot right there. It will call up your ballot for your precinct. You'll use the machine only to mark, this is not a tabulator, this is nothing but a marking device. Once you're done, once you say, yes, okay, I'm done casting, it will spit the ballot back out. You'll see it, as you see an example there, you'll review your, your choices, and then you'll take it up to the front. And this is what's the precinct counter, this is the DS200, all right? I know this looks monstrous, but it's actually, it's secure, there's, there's only parts of it that you'll bring back on Election Night. So they'll feed it in, and you can see where the feeder is there. It'll say, ready, the voter will then put it in. If they have something wrong with their ballot, they have not passed it yet, until they put it in there. They can bring it back to the judge, we spoiled that ballot, they're able to vote again. So we don't have people who say, oh, this was, my ballot was wrong, but I already voted. It gives them a little bit more time to review. It also gives them the feel of a paper ballot in their hand. It also gives us paper ballots in case we ever had a challenge, a runoff, something where a judge ordered that box to be opened. So it goes through the counter, drops down under, I wish that was open, but it's not, but into a secure ballot box that can only be, that will be sealed and have access by key only, okay? And then, so that goes on all election, and then at the end of the night, they'll have either, you can, oh, sorry. There'll be two media that the poll workers will have. They'll take a disc from there that will have the tabulation on an electronic form of media. They'll also, both the judge and alternate will seal, on the back of that, this little box comes out, the tiny box that holds the ballots. It's on rollers, just like a little roller, roller bag. It's very light. I worked with it, it has, it can hold up to 2,500 ballots. We put in 2,500 ballots and it was still pretty light. You know, we don't usually see that kind of turnout at a polling site. But then they'll bring that sealed box with the media, just like any other election night. And then we will maintain those records for 22 months, just like we normally do. The next part, when it does come to counting paper ballots, right now, we feed an optical scanner individual ballots, page by page. It takes four days of people constantly just feeding a single page into a counter. We have two counters. The parties nominate counting station personnel, and they basically sit in there for eight hours and count ballots. It's not efficient, it's not the best use of our time by far. So these two, these 450s, my old county that I worked in had an 850, because we did all paper, so it was a little bit bigger. But, so these would be smaller for a county that would use 10,000 to 15,000 to 20,000 ballots, paper ballots. They can run it through, it stacks it, it can stack output by, you can have it output by write-in, you can have it output by undervote. There's a lot of options on that, but the best option is that it counts 72 ballots per minute, rather than the maybe four or five that we've been currently able to count. This is also available so that if we ever did get a challenge, where they wanted to open the ballot box, a judge ordered the ballot box open of the paper ballots, we would run them through here. These will count full-page ballots, full-size, 14-inch, 19-inch. And then we would be able to do a recount or any sort of challenged or contested election without, again, having to hand-feed each ballot one by one. So I know that's a lot of information, and I've looked at this a thousand times, so. But people who haven't, I want to make sure that you either understand the system, if you have questions about it, you know, I want to make sure that they're answered, so I open it up to the commission. I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
So Lisa, what's the timeframe? I know that we've got the, the money set aside, we talked about this during budget. This would be something that I do think should probably go before the commissioner's court on a Monday, so that the public is well aware of that, and I know we're just getting the presentation today.
Right, this is just strictly the presentation.
But what's the timeline, if we were to, at the end of this month, early December, take action? At that point, I assume we would also be making a decision on whether or not to go with the polling precinct sites or the alternative?
Well, we would not do that yet. What we would do is, we would go into the May election, it's not a countywide, because the entities are, are small. It's like EPISD, EPCC, we don't know how many polling sites really will be used. So we may have enough with 100 machines, but we would move to the new system by May of 19. So if we were able to get a decision made by, say, early December, have delivery sometime in January, we would then have our training on our staff, let's say, early February, mid to February, we'll do some public. We're going to go to like libraries. We'll do some public, um, we're gonna go to like libraries, we're gonna have some stuff here, um, trying to hit at least every, uh, commission district, if not once or twice, to show off the machine. We're gonna have one set up in our office that people can come test anytime during the day, with a mock election obviously on it. Um, we'd like to have all of that kind of done in February, March. We'll bring our poll workers in in April for their training, um, and then we'll have the May election with probably June runoff. During that kind of April, May, June, July, we'll be also doing our presentation on moving to vote centers for November of nineteen. Um, I, I think there's a more of a, a rush on the system based on just the, the age and the, and the, uh, the use of it, and what, um, what we saw as far as just pieces that are, you know, fitting and things like that. Um, so we had talked about trying to get the new system ready for implementation in the May twenty-nineteen election, with the vote center, um, pilot in November of twenty-nineteen.
Mr. There's any questions? Commissioner Better?
How, how many machines are we talking between the two different choices between the polling sites and the?
So, we're talking about having the, excuse me, eleven, I think the both of, um, estimates call for eleven thirty-five on the poll site machines, but the difference is the actual counter. Because if we go to vote centers, and we can adjust as ever, as we need, but the thing that a lot of counties have done, excuse me, let me make sure I have these pages right. Eleven thirty-five and eleven thirty-five. The thing that a lot of, of the places have done is that they've cut back on the number of machines they've, they purchased. They've gone, let's say they went down to a hundred sites, they, and they only stacked those with the same number they would have normally, which would have been six. Problem is now you have fifty polling sites that aren't being utilized, and all these people are having to come vote somewhere. So you don't want to cut yourself too short on the actual voting machines. The thing that's really declines, if you go to vote centers, is the actual D, the D S two hundred, the counter, because you only need one of those at each location. So do you see what I'm saying? What I don't want to do is say, okay, well now, now Bassett's gonna be a vote center. Well, we always put nine sites, nine machines there, let's just leave nine. But we've closed five polling sites around Bassett. So, really, what we should be doing is making sure they've got twenty machines there. And we pulled from a place that barely, maybe didn't get a lot of turnout, and we only put four machines at that location. And we also want to make sure we've got enough in the back for stuff, you know, you don't want an under-purchase. So, but, uh, the quotes both have the eleven thirty-five, whether we stay at vote centers, or whether we go to, um, or stay at polling sites or go to vote centers. Um, and I'd be willing to look at those numbers, but I don't want to cut them too short. I don't want to under, I don't want to have us roll out this vote center plan, and then especially coming into twenty-twenty, have people who have to wait, oh yeah, now we went to vote centers, now we wait an hour and a half, or before we waited forty-five minutes, because we don't have enough machines to, to do that. So the machines don't change, because you're basically just moving everything to that location from those places you close. And the only thing that goes down is the number of precinct counters at each location in these proposals.
And, and how do you figure out, I guess, how many machines to purchase? Is there a formula to talk, I don't know, X machines per number of voters?
We basically went down, no, we didn't really do per voters. We went down what we wanted to staff, or what we wanted to supply our places with. Um, so Bassett's a perfect example, um, we want to make sure that they have at least fifteen. We want to make sure that, um, when we go out to the Y W C A West, um, we want to make sure we have at least fifteen. At Doris Van Dorn, we want to make sure we have at least eleven. And when we go to, um, you know, we just go location by location by location, and talk about what this, what the room fits, what we see in turn, in past turnout at those locations, what we think would be, you know, the best suited for each of those locations. Because right now, we have thirteen-hundred of our machines, um, and that's what the initial purchase was. So we cut it down to eleven thirty-five for two reasons. One is these machines are faster. Two is that, um, in, when you use the D R E, it's a tabulator, which means after you do early voting, those have to sit aside until the canvas is over, they can't be touched. Because a ballot marking device is only a machine to use to mark the ballot and doesn't hold any results, you can use the same for early voting and election day. So we wouldn't have to set two-hundred aside, we could mix those in, um, because again, that's used to only mark the ballot and not hold results. So we did knock it down from thirteen-hundred to eleven thirty-five.
So I guess, like, this election, I guess, was a sort of a good example, you know, there was, there was high voter turnout. Did, did you all measure in any way, I guess, the, uh, length of line? Something I heard off, you know, there was, especially on the last day, you know, there's a lot of folks who went to the last minute. You know, there were folks who are waiting over an hour, hour and a half line.
Yes, yes.
Did, did you all look at that?
So we, what we can do now, and we did look at, a lot of the places, um, any place that had incredibly long lines on early voting, it's generally the same, five or six locations. Um, and what we would have our poll worker do is give somebody a yellow card, and then once, then time it until that person got up there to see, hey, what, how long is it taking? Um, obviously, in a high turnout, there's gonna be a thirty, maybe forty-five minute wait. I don't like to go any higher than that, because I do think people leave. So, a couple of things we could do this time that we did do, where we are able to monitor the check-ins on our new poll pad, and we could see that it was taking like eighteen seconds to check a voter compared to almost a minute, which we were doing with our own system. So they're moving faster. Um, what we could do, if we had five extra machines at a location, would, you know, keep going and going and going and going. Um, so, but a lot of the things also on election day is we would staff a place with seven machines, and by two o'clock, two of them weren't working. Screen wasn't working anymore. So now they're down to three machines, and we don't have, you know, we've given all of ours out to the busier places. Well, now these become busy places, because now they've got three machines. So I mean, we, every election, we continue to fight more and more locations like that on, okay, we know it's, these are gonna be the busy locations, but then more and more become busy locations as we continually grow in turnout, as we continually grow in voter registration numbers, and as we continually lose, you know, lose our supply. So, um, honestly, I think the lines, especially once we go to twenty-twenty, I mean, twenty-twenty's gonna just really be high. And so, um, as those machines age, and we're having to knock down a place that I would love to put ten in, if we're only able to put in five, I mean, then the lines get longer, people leave, I mean, we all know that. So, you know, we try to do everything we can, monitor your line. They, our early voting sites now do wait times on the app, and so we'll check on that, if it's zero to ten minutes. Obviously, we leave that alone. Um, thirty minutes are over, we contact them, we ask them, you know, what's going on? Um, are your machines working? Are there poll workers there who maybe aren't moving as fast? Um, can, basically kind of just a triage, can we send people here, can we send people there? Um, because, you know, there's gonna be lines in a high election turnout, I know that, but I don't really like them to go higher than thirty or forty-five minutes. I think after that, people do decide that, hey, I've waited long enough. And that's why we added the wait time on the app, so that if you were at Bassett, and you were waiting forty-five minutes, you could see Carolina had ten minutes, and you might decide to go do that. Um, so, we are working on line management, and we, we work on line management every year to try to figure out a better way to do it. At our annual conference, we had a guy from Disneyland come and talk to us about line management. So I mean, we always kind of take ideas on what we can do, but in the end, there will be a limit on space and people, and there will be lines. Um, it's kind of a good and a bad problem to have, so I, I, I like it more in the middle, where it's, it's a decent line, but not a, um, I think, a line that thrives people away. And we'll continue to watch it, and we do every election.
So the eleven thirty-five number will give you, will give us enough flexibility to keep a high number? I mean, if we decide, let's say, more than sixty-five percent, that give us the flexibility to do that and scale it down?
Right, because then what would happen is, I wouldn't close this one that we give five to, so then this, this vote center wouldn't need those five. So we can, like I said, there are some counties that have kept it at ninety percent, and just had ten percent of the polling sites that saw nothing, that, you know, saw very low turnout. I, I don't like to go just based on turnout though, and your district is a perfect example, because there's a lot of far, far east locations that if we were to close a polling site way out there, then they have nowhere to go. So, turnout is not the only thing that I want to look at, you know, and we'll discuss as we get into the formula phase of that.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Judge, I, I, Lisa, I, I agree with you. As we go into these voting centers, this is what we're trying to do, encourage voters, and if they're first-time voters, like we had this last election, and they encounter an hour wait, they're not gonna come back.
Right. Right, and that's the, that's the whole point of kind of doing stuff to get first-time voters and, and return voters, but once they vote three or four times, studies show, that's, they'll vote, they'll, they'll continue to vote, and, um, you don't want to, you don't want to lose them on the first shot.
I appreciate the presentation, Lisa, I know this was gonna come before the commissioners' court on a Monday, but I think this is really helpful for the public to understand, uh, what we're considering, and then we'll bring it back. When do we think we'll bring it back?
Well, we were ready to bring it back Monday.
Yes.
But we, we, I mean, because we would like to get moving the, the lead time and everything to get the machines, um, ordered and ready. Um, so we're, we would like to bring it back as early as Monday, if you all would be, um, acceptable to that.
I have some, I mean, I have some, I know we have a long meeting today, so I'll keep some questions for Monday. Like, if you see, cost, I think, you know, I'm surprised by the cost of these things, they're more expensive. But I'll ask them.
The cost is high, but I, I can tell you that I have seen other, I mean, the other vendors, like, we can't talk about exactly what that was, but, um, I can tell you it was more than six figures, um, as far as an increase. Um, and then you, if you, and I can look, um, and give you some numbers from other counties that are even smaller in size than us and what they've spent, um, it is expensive. And, and nobody was really prepared, because everybody got federal funding for the initial purchase. When, when you got the HAVA money, um, you, you didn't have to come up with it, the state didn't, the counties didn't. And so, everybody, I think, kept thinking, well, maybe we'll get another HAVA influx, and we got a HAVA, we got twenty-four million dollars for the state of Texas, um, which is nowhere near, and they're only putting, I think, four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand of that towards new machines. Their number one priority with that is for, uh, security of elections. So, unfortunately, right now, we're on our own.
And I know a lot of counties are gonna be purchasing equipment in the very near future, and so the, as soon as we're, the earlier we'll get the equipment and not be a part of that big backlog.
Right, I know there's at least between fifteen and twenty who are working with the vendor that I would like to work with right now for a May or November, uh, delivery.
There, there's no chance, I mean, I think all of us have that one fear of, we buy, we buy the machines, the next day they come out and say, oh, we got money for you. There's no, there's, if that happens, we're just outlawed, it's.
Well, we had talked about, and I don't know if this is possible, but we had talked about working on some sort of caveat in the agreement that if the state, and stop me if I'm misspeaking, um, if the state were to offer funding, which I don't think the state would, I think it would have to come from the federal level, I don't think the state has the money. If the federal government finally said, okay, look, we do understand, everybody needs this, that we would have some sort of grandfather clause where we would get what we would have been due had not that happened. I, I think we talked about that, but see if I'm right.
Also, when I was at the NACO conference, it's actually on the NACO's federal agenda, because this was a, this is a nationwide problem, and NACO, uh, we, we are all in the same boat, where we need the machines now, and we don't see the federal funding, but we specifically added, um, into the legislative agenda for NACO to work on, if there is any federal funding released, that it back, retro to, to counties that have purchased, uh, equipment, um, that they'll be allowed to participate in any type of benefit program through HAVA, um, that they've purchased equipment the last couple of years.
Again, that equipment, though, I know even in the legislation, has to, has to have a verifiable paper trail. So if you bought D R Es, then you would not qualify. And I know, like, Hidalgo County right now is struggling, they just spent over eight million dollars, um, on D R Es, and they, they know this piece of legislation is gonna be passed next year, and they're gonna be in big trouble. I mean, financially, just to try to figure out what they can do. So, um, they're smaller than us, but again, they spent over eight million dollars, and, um, they're gonna have to retrofit every single one of those machines, probably.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Lisa, appreciate it. Thank you, thank you very much.
We have quite a few folks who are here, I believe, on item seven. Um, and so, because we do have such a large group waiting for that item, unless item six has a flight to catch?
All right, I don't have an answer on that yet, um. So if you want to take number seven out, I can see if six is on a, is on a tight timeline.
Are they here?
Yes, I know. I take that back, Judge, I don't see the number.
Okay, I think you take item seven, please. And for anyone who is here for item seven that would like to speak, just a reminder again, if you could please sign up, we've got the phone lay outside the door there.
I'm sorry, seven, yes, item seven.
So we'll take item seven, item seven. Item number seven, receive a presentation and discuss the possible merger and consolidation of services that will pass those public housing authorities.
Judge, commissioners, this item, we're bringing back to you, um, as you know, we've discussed, uh, previously, we have discussed the concept of looking at merging housing authorities. So the county housing, the concept was, would we be interested in merging the county housing authority with the city of El Paso Housing Authority? Uh, HUD has, we've spoken to HUD about this on, um, occasion, and they've given us some, uh, information on why they thought mergers have been successful, and what, why they're, why they encourage mergers. Um, and I do believe there's someone here from HUD today. But we also received information from the city of El Paso Housing Authority, um, and information from the county housing authority about different programs and services and, um, waitlist and number of units available. And I know it's the court's interest to, um, have the most efficient and, uh, effective means to meet the housing needs of our community. So, um, with that, I asked Irene to go through the information and talk to the entities about the information that's been provided, and to provide an overview of that information to the court. We are not asking you to make any decision today, or the item is not posted to take action today, but, uh, we just wanted to present this information. We've also invited both the county housing authority and the city housing authority to be here today to answer any questions, provide the information they'd like. But basically, we just want to provide some additional information to the court as we continue considering the best, uh, way to meet the needs of, uh, our community. So with that, I'll turn it over to Irene.
Good morning, Kenny Judge, Commissioner Darby Valenzuela, Community Services Department. Uh, as Betsy said, you, you all have had this conversation about the possible merger and consolidation with the county housing authority and the city's housing authority. It is actually an action plan item in your strategic plan, uh, specifically item number nineteen point B C point zero six on your plan. You asked for a review of the county's role as it relates to this, uh, potential consolidation. And as a result of that, as Betsy said, um, there's been an overview that's been done. Um, you've also received a report from the housing authority for the city of El Paso in reference to, uh, giving comparisons of both entities, as well as a, uh, potential proposal for a consolidation. Um, I reviewed the report, I, like Betsy said, I did meet with the officials of both housing authorities. I spoke into HUD as well, um, uh, in an effort to verify some of the information that's on the report as well. So the following information you're gonna receive in this presentation is a, as a result of that overview and the conversations that I've had with all the entities and all the officials. Um, in speaking to HUD, um, uh, they did give me a, a lot of information about why they are supporting a possible consolidation or transfer, as they call it. Um, as you may know, there are over thirty-eight-hundred public housing agencies across the country that serve fifty-two million families, uh, through their Section eight housing voucher program and public housing programs across the country. The majority of these agencies are small housing authorities. Uh, some own as few as four rental units, while the largest, the New York City Housing Authority, uh, receives funding from HUD for over two-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand public housing units and vouchers. The county's housing authority is among one of the small ones, uh, that manages, uh, under five-hundred vouchers, uh, while the city's housing authority, uh, is considered, uh, the fourteenth largest housing authority in the nation and the largest public housing authority in the state of Texas. Like I said, I'm sorry.
You said the largest in the state?
Largest in the state of Texas. Um, like Betsy said, um, HUD is supporting, uh, a transfer and a consolidation of both entities. They've cited a number of reasons for supporting this transfer, and part of those reasons are, are up in this light that you see in front of you. Um, transferring a smaller housing authority, uh, to a larger one allows for, uh, consolidated efforts to take advantage and. to take advantage and leverage economies of scale. A larger housing authority has a bigger purchasing power, so it allows it, they claim that that gives smaller entities leverage as far as economies of scale. Another argument is that there's thousands of housing authorities across the country that serve an extremely small number of households but have high administrative costs. So simply owning a building, hiring staff, owning the proper systems to do all the work that's necessary, the administrative costs for smaller housing authorities become extremely high. Additionally, as far as vouchers, residents in a jurisdiction must lease up in that jurisdiction where they receive a voucher. HUD also contends that that can limit the choice for residents, potentially wanting to live in cheaper neighborhoods or areas in other jurisdictions unless they do exercise a portability option for the voucher. There are administrative costs to that when they board those and there's administrative beneficiaries to that.
Rorokari, explain again what that portability, like how does that work?
Yeah, I was gonna get it.
Okay.
So if a county resident receives a voucher by, in the county, by the housing county authority, the county housing authority, and they exercise the option to lease in another jurisdiction, for example, in this case, maybe the city of El Paso's jurisdiction, HUD will reimburse the issuing agency, the county housing authority, for that voucher. However, the issuing agency has to then turn around and charge the, charge the fees for the jurisdiction where the actual voucher ends up. And so that's paperwork and there's a process that takes to do that. And those are things that HUD contends with a consolidation, it'll eliminate and mitigate those administrative costs and those administrative processes. So there's no portability with a merged housing authority, there's no need to do all that administrative process and work behind the scenes with paying one agency and then having to turn around that agency, having to reimburse for the voucher to the other agency. And that happens with both the city and the county. So HUD contains, asserts that the consolidation will eliminate that if there's no portability for that. And of course, you'll, you'll hear more of that perhaps from, from the city's housing authority and the county's housing authorities as well. And HUD also maintains that it's difficult for them to audit and manage several thousand housing authorities that they have to do across the country for court compliance monitoring. They argue that the level of effort it takes for them to monitor small housing authorities is disproportionate to the level of units involved and the level of subsidy dollar volumes for all the housing authorities involved. Additionally, it's difficult for smaller housing authorities to invest in technology and so that's one of the things that also HUD contends with a merger, they could take advantage of a larger housing authority than all their innovation and their options. It is tougher for them to invest in technology and innovation. Nobody expects them to be the next Facebook or Google, but it helps when they're maximizing technology within their social housing sector. It helps them gain an edge and do their work more efficiently. That's information provided to me from HUD. In this next slide is information from the report that I was able to verify by speaking to all of the agencies involved. I've listed some primary components for both agencies. Of course, as you can see, HASEP demonstrates capacity and higher performance due to their established history in the community. They've been in existence for over 80 years compared to EPTA's 30-year history, while HASEP has longstanding programs that transition families to homeownership. EPTA has worked over the last two years to establish similar programs for their residents as well. They both rate as high performers in both the Public Assessment System Scoring and the Section 8 Management Assessment Program. That's the acronym you see, PHAS and the CMAP Performance Rating. They're both rated as high performers.
And is that a rating that, sorry, done through HUD?
HUD, HUD uses that to, to monitor their performance for both agencies. HUD, of course, has launched the Rental Assistance Administration Project. Over the last few years, they have completed 4,200 units. EPTA, the county's housing authority, has applied for RAT projects. They're on a waiting list that I understand is up to 18 months for them to get approval for that. Excuse me. You'll also see a figure there, the HCV Admin Spending. That's a Housing Choice Voucher Spending that's listed for both agencies. It's a percentage of spending at, under, or above the amount of payments that they get reimbursed by HUD. And so you'll see on the HASEP side, there's a 95%. The EPTA side is a, the slide shows 150%. I got a report as latest Friday afternoon from HUD that it was at 132%. Now, I received clarification from EPTA. That rating is based on a tool that HUD uses for agencies to monitor their performance and it's based on projections. It's a projected figure, but it's based on historical data, but it is a projection. And so, well, it shows that EPTA is above their spending capacity, it's based on a projection. And so what it is, is, you know, it depends and they're monitoring that and it depends on, on where they're at as far as their housing choice vouchers. And so this program makes projections based on that. However, it doesn't take into accountability some information that EPTA gave me. It doesn't take into account the portability fees that EPTA charges, so they get quite a bit of money from that. They also have fraud recovery fees that they receive, another fees from HUD that brings that expenditure ratio to between 94 to 98%. And so that's one clarification I wanted to make in that slide. Again, information that I received late afternoon.
And does HUD not take that into account when they calculate the percentage?
I beg your pardon?
Does HUD not take those two into account when they calculate this percentage?
Well, they take into account, they do use historical data, so it's based on data that's given to them as HUD as agencies are reporting. And so they make projections based on that, but it appears that they hadn't taken into account, and I'll have, I don't wanna speak for EPTA, but this is information that EPTA gave me, so I'll let them elaborate on that, but it appears that they hadn't taken into account a present figure. And so historically, and a projection is based on past figures. And so today, EPTA has received some, some fees and some funding that keeps their expenditure ratio below 100%. I've also looked into other components of both agencies. Of course, there's an argument that a smaller housing authority understands the unique needs of their own respective community and their residents versus a mega housing authority like the housing authority of the city of El Paso. And some of these arguments can be supported by customer satisfaction survey reviews. And I did a real quick, just basic search of Google reviews and customer service ratings for both entities. EPTA does not have any customer service ratings at all on the Google reviews, while HASEP does. There's 29 reviews that I found, they are rated two stars out of five. Out of those 29, 19 provided a one-star rating for the housing authority's customer satisfaction. However, I understand that HASEP does their own internal customer service satisfaction surveys and they're working heavily on, on working with their customers on, on the satisfaction. Again, EPTA does not have any Google ratings at all, but they also have conducted their own internal customer service satisfaction report. They did one in 2017 and did another one recently this year, which showed favorable ratings from the residency users of, of the public housing authority. And there's other items in there, you know, the, the number of Section 8 vouchers versus EPTA, the number of units. EPTA has two communities, while HASEP has 83. However, the county's housing authority provides project-based vouchers to two single-room occupancy projects in downtown El Paso. They work with the Opportunity Center for those and so while they're not considered part of their total number of communities, they, they do provide vouchers that assist these programs for the homeless as well. Their operating budget varies significantly, obviously, because of the size of their authorities. And so in a nutshell, that's, that's some of the programs at a glance. This next slide, I provided a snapshot of information of each agency's existing programs for the residents. And this information I was able to verify with both entities as well as information provided to me by HUD. HUD does have, I beg your pardon, HASEP does have many established programs for the residents and you, they do have over 50-plus MOU partnerships for residents for supportive services from providers in the community. They offer a range of housing options from elderly housing to eventual homeownership options as well. And they do have an active RAT team that can mobilize instantly if they were to be given a new conversion project. However, EPTA, over the last two years, has worked and begun to establish similar partnerships and similar programs for the residents. They've held a number of wellness and health fairs in their, in their communities and events. My office has been a part of a number of those health and wellness fairs for their community residents. They have launched this year the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. They employ America Revistas to help them enhance their outreach efforts in the community. And they have worked diligently with HUD to obtain HUD-BASH vouchers for veterans, which is something that wasn't existent with the county's housing authority in the past. So they, they obtained 10 initial vouchers and they've already received, I believe, tentative approval to get 10 more. So they'll have 20 HUD vouchers that beforehand had been available to county residents or veterans of the county. I think I wanted to conclude just by kind of giving you just a very brief information. I mean, consolidation is just but one option. There, there may be other options that can be explored, but at the very least, I think it makes sense for the court to start these discussions about the idea. And I do commend you for, for taking that step and, and having these, these very difficult discussions. There are officials, like Betsy said, from both sides, from both entities, as well as representatives from HUD, that, that can give you a more elaborate view of their stance as it pertains to this proposed consolidation. But with that, I end my presentation. I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Commissioners, we do have six individuals here to speak on the item, but I'm not sure if you want to ask questions of Irene now or perhaps some of the folks that may come up and speak. So I'm gonna go ahead and invite, so we have two of our board members from the county's housing authority here, I believe the current president of the board, Mr. Acosta. Thank you for being here and thank you for your service on the county housing authority.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Commissioners, good morning. Thank you all for inviting us to be here with you all, to discuss this very important issue that exists in our community. As you all know, this issue is important because it involves people's lives. It's about what's in the best interest of people's lives. And I thank you for giving us this opportunity. It's very important, on behalf of the EPTA board and its chairman, our interest is in the people in the county of El Paso. We will support what is best for our clients and the county of El Paso. But we do have a few questions that we want to ask. We want to know how many public units would be built in our county by when and what's a timeline, so we can go ahead and tell our clients that this is what's coming, this is what's in the best interest of them, so they can have a place to live in the future. We want to know how many vouchers will that increase? We want specifics. How many vouchers will increase by when? What's a timeline? How is this gonna affect the people of the county? This is what we're interested in. How many veterans' vouchers will they increase by when? What's a timeline? What are the specifics? The waiting time for waitlist that HASEP has versus the waiting time that EPTA has? How long is it gonna be? How is that gonna be administered by when? What is the timeline? What happens to our employees? We have six, seven employees. What happens to our employees for the future? How are they gonna be affected? Preliminary analysis of this is dollars and cents. Bigger is not always better, as most of us know. But nevertheless, I wanna leave you all with the few thoughts that we have. We are willing to partner with the Anthony Housing Authority, with HASEP in El Paso, and partner. Because at the end of the day, it's not about an employee. It's about people, people's lives, families. How can we make it better? Can we partner? Can we go out for grants? Can we go ahead and make things more efficient for both sides? Most recently, we have had a request from HASEP to, HASEP to, to have our financial person go out and give them a hand and help. Sure, why not? They've helped us when we first got on the board. I didn't even know we had El Paso County Housing Authority. And I've lived here all my life. I had no clue when Commissioner Carlos Leon asked me to serve on this board. I had no idea. And Mr. Chon was very welcoming, helped our entire board, we were fairly new, and set us up and gave us a presentation and helped us. Why can't we work it that way? Why can't we partner together? Make it better, not only for the city, not only for the county, for everybody in the whole county of El Paso. So I leave you with a couple of thoughts. One is, is this in the best interest for jurisdiction? Is that what we're talking about? Is it a jurisdiction issue as opposed to people issue? Or number two, is HASEP landlocked within the city of El Paso and consequently they need the jurisdiction of the county? What is the underlying reasons? Because we're willing, anything that's in the best interest of our clients in the county of El Paso, we as a board of commissioners, we're all in favor. Thank you all very much for your time. Thank you for inviting us to be here. I really appreciate it. Any questions?
Thank you for your service on the, on the board. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Next, we have another member of the board, Ms. Connie Crawford.
Thanks, I appreciate your having us here today. I would just like to say a couple things very briefly. First, there's been a lot of talk about bigger is better. That seems to be the main argument. I hope that people will look in the city, in the county, come to making a decision that what's best for the people who already live and receive benefits from EPTA. Those people have no voice in this, nor does either board. It's the city and the county. And I hope that the commissioners and the city council will make it a point using some vehicles to talk to the people who will be directly impacted by this. I hope you'll please do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Next, we have Mr. Ray Tuis with the Opportunity Center.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you allowing me to be here today. For the past 30 years, my life has been dedicated to working with the homeless in the city of El Paso. I've worked with all three housing authorities and have actually started with a housing authority program in 1993. We worked with the El Paso Housing Authority for 10 years and there were some issues as we went along, basically hard for them to send inspectors so that we could fill the rent. But the biggest problem that I had was at the end of that 10 years. And at the end of that 10 years, there was, I mean, it knocked me for a loop, an attempt, it seemed, by the El Paso Housing Authority to take over the, the project that we were in, to such to basically withhold vouchers and then allow us to collapse and so they could take over a property that would make money for them. It scared the heck out of us and actually, we went to HUD Fort Worth and had a person there who helped us transfer those vouchers actually to Anthony Housing Authority. And so based on that first scare, I am a bit uneasy about not having the option to select another housing authority if I need to. We've worked tremendously well with Anthony Housing, have won 39 vouchers with them. The, then- We then moved also with the County Housing Authority, we have 52 vouchers with them. They are very focused on the population that I served, which is the homeless. The El Paso Housing Authority historically has not welcomed, well, I gotta be careful, and not, basically have informed us that they are not a service agency, they're a housing agency. And so much of the work with the homeless has been developing transitional systems that allow the wait time needed to get into El Paso Housing Authority. And so, but the County Housing Authority and Anthony have been very good about working with my population and understanding the needs that I have. Now, some of this may be able to be changed, but I am very worried because of this experience I've had almost 15 years ago now, that the projects that we had could be taken over by a larger, more powerful organization. If we ever see anything like that, I would request that our vouchers be moved to Anthony or we're allowed to mandate them. So that's been the crisis that I felt that I needed to present, and it may be past history, but I would, I wanted you to know this and to, the homelessness is my issue, and that is the issue that I am working with, and I have found better care among the smaller housing authorities than I have with the El Paso Housing Authority. Thank you very much for this.
Thank you for being here and thanks for the work that you do in the community. I know that this is an issue that we've all been talking about, and I know that Joel Bishop is here with the county, he's been working with you and your team, so we appreciate the collaboration.
Thank you.
Next, we have Donna Wicks, she's the Director of Field Operations with HUD. Good morning, Ms. Wicks.
Good morning. Thank you for inviting me here today. And my role at HUD is, I'm a Regional Public Housing Director, I just kinda wanna give you a scope first of what I operate. So with that, I manage over 832 PHAs in our Southwest Network. Majority of them are here in Texas, we have three offices here. We have the office in Houston, we have one in San Antonio, we have one in Fort Worth. You can see the volume of what we do, this is the majority. A third of our housing agencies are in Texas. I also manage in New Mexico, Oklahoma, Arkansas, and Louisiana. So I see a wide variety of our PHAs. Out of the 832, 72% of our portfolio is what I call small PHAs. They are 250 units and less. And when you get into 250, we have many who are at the 50 and 60, right around those that are doing public housing. And then some of the midsize have both public housing and vouchers. One of the goals of HUD in this administration, and actually, it's been a rotating goal for many, many years, is to look at the funding of our programs in relation to where it is, our PHAs are capable of actually operating our programs. And as you know, our primary goal is for quality, affordable housing that is habitable, that, you know, it is the right of everyone to have habitable housing, meaning that you have to be able to maintain it, whether it's in your Section 8 program, you have to have viable landlords, which we've just done a lot of listening sessions on to find out why our landlords don't want to have our Section 8 program. But also on our public housing side, to make sure that our PHAs have enough funds in the next couple of years and the five to 10, 10-year vision as to what is gonna happen in public housing. If our cap funds are continuing to decline, our backlog is out there, we have obsolete units. And so just as recently as yesterday, our Deputy Assistant Secretary Dominique Blom had sent out an email about one of our priorities this year is to bring awareness and influence to our communities to discuss the repositioning of our public housing and moving many of those to a voucher program, moving a lot of that housing into the hands of private ownership, et cetera, so that we can start to improve our population of housing, but also make sure that it's sustainable into the future. So what I really wanted to talk with you about today, and I did hear a lot in the conversations, is looking at the big picture. And so as I travel around, as trying to get, looking at it from a business perspective, just as if you were gonna do a merger and an acquisition, you would look at all the expenses of what you were going to be receiving, looking at the expenses of where it was going, and looking at it from, how am I going to eliminate certain costs but actually improve? And part of it is improving in the services that we have, because really, when we look at repositioning, the focus is on the long term. What do you want to look like in five to 10 years? And as I travel around Texas, a lot of our smaller PHAs who are maybe running at a functional entity as we are now, as the county, has good people working there, they are working through their voucher programs and public housing. But in 10 years, where do we want to see that? And HUD is not gonna come in and tell you, you need to do A, B, or C. What we're trying to do is to have you look at it from a business perspective, to look at the pros and cons of what you're going to be and where you're gonna be, to make sure you have the funding. Because at the end of the day, someone's gonna have to pick up that gap, and we're finding that in even some of our larger cities that have issues in rent, say San Francisco, New York City, who's gonna come pick up the gap at the end of the day? And I can tell you HUD will be there to pick up the gap. So as we see a decline in admin fees, we see a decline in our cap funds, operating subsidy, you will have to look at from a financial picture and a business perspective, which is why you're all in your position, as to where should we be? How can we start to migrate that plan and what is best for the residents? Because at the end of the day, they deserve to have quality housing that you and I, as I say, that you and I would live in. And when I go to see, like in Louisiana, where we have a really high poverty level, and I look at some of the housing, where it's really hard to upgrade it from obsolescence once it gets to a certain point, would you put your own relatives in that housing? And so you need to look far out there. How do we have enough funds? How do we have enough services? And how do we give people as much opportunity as they have? As we look at what one of the secretaries initiative is, which is really self-sufficiency, how are we getting people into areas of self-sufficiency that is long-term sustainable? And we're not just saying a part-time job of 20, 30 hours, the rent burden that our middle-class America feels today is quite expensive. People cannot operate on $10, $15 an hour, working 20 hours a week. Their rent burden in some cities is up to 50%, meaning 50% of their income is going towards housing. So if we want to give people opportunities, we're gonna have to look at more of what we're calling regional concepts. So what would we look at for regional concept? From a financial point of view, would that make sense? And those are things that HUD can only ask you the questions on, but hoping that you look down that path of your debits and credits, your liabilities, as to where will you be in five to 10 years, looking at the economic development in El Paso, where are your jobs headed? As an example, in Houston, where I'm located, Houston is considered one of the largest, what we call retail employers in the United States. They're fifth, meaning that most of the people, those jobs, are gonna be at a certain level of income. So where do you need that housing? Where do you need the housing to service those people? So looking at housing studies, looking at housing, where do you need the housing based on allowing people to be self-sufficiency? As the constituencies that you have, you need to look at, where is that housing needed? What is gonna be the affordability of it? And how are you gonna let people transfer based on their economic needs? So giving people more mobility, giving people the opportunity to move and take advantage of the services they need. As we know, a lot of folks, as they're coming, especially on the homeless population, which is very dear to my heart, that I work with quite a bit, you know, what additional services do those need? And a lot of it is that once they get into housing, what we're finding is a lot of the chronically homeless need services up to 24 months. So that costs money. And so when you look at your revenues coming in based on the rents that you're getting in your cash flow, where's that money gonna come from? And so what we're finding is a lot of our larger agencies, the positive side, is having that additional revenue to provide those services for people. We want people to be self-sufficient, they're gonna need better income, they're gonna need better jobs, they're gonna need access to transportation. So looking at the big picture of servicing your whole metropolitan area, what do you see as those needs and what's the best way to do that? So when you look at economies of scales, that's one of the very obvious ones, of looking how much it costs you to run a HUD program. And I empathize with all of you for running our HUD programs, because I'll be the first to say, it is a lot of overhead, whether it's your CBG program, your home program, your rural programs, our programs, it costs a lot of overhead to do, from audits to staffing to our monitoring, which I know you all love. But at the point where comes a economy of scale of how can you best consolidate all your resources to provide the best services for the people? And so you're gonna hear more and more of this coming from HUD to make these hard decisions, and they are not easy decisions to make. On one side, we're looking at residents, et cetera, we're also looking at people who run these agencies, and you cannot ignore that. But you have to start looking at the big picture. In five to 10 years, where is El Paso going to be? Where do you need your most housing? I know HASEP has just completed a housing study. Those housing studies are not cheap, but it shows you where your trends are, where's your economic development, where do you need to have your affordable housing? And also being able to build that housing. To build that housing, you have to be able to have the public-private partnerships to do that. The RAD program is one of our successful programs that we have, but it's very difficult sometime to find the funding to be able to do that. So in some of our smaller agencies, for them to renovate and recap 20 units that were built in, say, 1950 is very difficult, because your renovation, when you open up those walls, are coming up to current building codes, which means you're big hits. I call it the electrical, the plumbing, and also your ADA. So when you're trying to come up to code, you have to be able to know you're gonna have those public-private partnerships in, which I think is one of the things that your bigger agencies are gonna bring to the table. If you look at the amount of work that HASEP has done on their RAD, they do not skip corners. You are providing really quality, affordable housing to people that will be sustainable for the next 30 years. Most of the HUD housing now is ending its life expectancy. I know some of yours was built very more currently, but for the most part, the HUD inventory has left its 30 years life. And so unless you've come in to do a RAD conversion or you're building tax credits without RAD into public-private partnerships, your 30-year sustainability is not going to be there, which means somebody again is gonna fill the gap. We know in revenues of cities and counties, et cetera, there's not enough left over at the end of the day to be able to supporting other agencies that are out there. So those are some of the big business issues that I'm hoping that you all consider. I think moving forward, looking at your balance sheets, et cetera, to see what makes sense is probably one of the biggest things you need to do at this point. Filling in the operational pieces is sort of at the back end, figuring out, you know, who's operating and the porting of vouchers, et cetera. Those are what I call the operational daily aspects of running our programs. But at the business level, determining for a resident, what agency is gonna be able to support people in five to 10 years? The staggering number of our, just in our public housing, is that we have $30 billion in backlog of repairs that need to be made to public housing across the United States. Now, granted, a big portion is in New York City, but if we pull New York City and Boston off the table, it still leaves a huge backlog that's out there. That is growing by about $2 billion, $1.5 to $2 billion every year. So I know like this year, we did see a small jump in our cap fund, but for a small PHA, that fund maybe went from, you know, $20,000 to $23,000. That is not a huge gap when you have to redo electrical and plumbing, et cetera, putting an ADA as our building codes go up to make sure we have sustainable housing. So I appreciate being here today. My whole goal was to give you sort of the awareness and influence, giving you those questions to look into your future. You know, you are a very growing metropolis within the state of Texas. I think some of the things you've done here are just incredible and off the charts. I think looking at sustainability, looking at the elderly complex that HASEP did on using its net zero development effort, you know, those are the things you need to be looking at for a city who has almost 365 days of sunshine per year, thinking outside the box as to how, A, you can bring new affordable housing here, you can make it cheaper for our residents, you can reduce their rent burden, but looking at where you want to be. And a lot of that's not looking at things how we do it today. But you want to have a staff and a team in place that has the experience and the partnerships to bring that to the table. And so I just encourage you to look outside the box, look where you see things are gonna happen in 10 years, look at the financial picture of how you would be able to make that level of sustainable housing that people need today. And it's not building as we did 10, 15 years ago. It's building with new, modern components that we have available now that make housing last for another 30 years. It's always, it's interesting to me when I go into towns and the one thing that's remaining is brick, because I can tell you, 60 years ago, we knew how to make brick, and even through tornadoes, et cetera, it does last. But the way that we build with a lot of our stick and mortar does not last 30 years. So when you're looking at your big picture, you need to take into account the staff and the team that you need to make El Paso resilient from the weather and the storms and lasting for 30 years, and you need a team. So in looking at a transfer of programs, et cetera, in the area, which may even expand outside this metroplex as the area is growing, you need to look at that. How do you want that staff to look? And how do you want to have the people who can bring those public partnerships to the table to work with both the county and the city? Because I think it's more than just a county issue, it's your whole city issue and the governance and how it ties into the state to be able to apply for tax credits, et cetera. I think Texas is in a very unique opportunity where we are on the bleeding edge of a lot of things around the United States, and I do have a chance to see a lot of agencies. But the things that we've done in Texas, I think, are pretty incredible, and that I'm hoping we can push that limit, because we do. For the next generation of millennials, our job is to push it so that the next folks that come in after all of us, they are left with something that is really sustainable in the future. And that we are, can be replaceable, but we want to leave a really good footprint for those folks. So I'll leave you with that. Do you all have any questions on where HUD is headed or any specifics that you would like to know about? If not, if I don't know, I will get you the answer.
I do have one quick question.
Sure.
You mentioned that 72% of your inventory is 250 units or less. And so given that HUD is looking at this regional model, is HUD investing in local communities, for example? If you now, you now know that we're looking at this as a potential option.
Correct, absolutely.
No decisions have been made. Is HUD offering any financial services to do those studies that you mentioned, to look at the economic impact, to look at the future growth projections? I mean, is that something that you all are offering or?
Excellent question. So I think one of the things is to looking, for doing housing studies, unfortunately, it is something that comes out of your own pocket. That would have to be done on a, maybe a grant from the state, et cetera. I think that HASEP has done that out of their own revenue secretary, so they have paid for it out of private, private funding. The only opportunity might be with some CBG funds, where you can potentially use that as an eligible expense to look, as part of your consolidated five-year plan, to look at your housing studies. You know, in your five-year plan, which I don't know if the county gets, do you get CBG funds or is it the city?
The city distributes.
The city does. But also working with the state on a housing study to know where it is. Now, I know HASEP has done one, so I would recommend not reinventing the wheel on that one, but use as the trending is there for economic development. So direct fund from PIH, there is no additional funds. One of the planning grants you can get is usually a choice neighborhood grant, is one that you can actually apply for on Inofa, which would give you planning dollars to look at ways that you want to do economic development, et cetera. But CBG is probably the only one that I could think of where you could be able to do a housing study. But based on the fact it's really based on a lot of economic development, you know, you'd have to look at it from an entire city point of view on that one. And then looking at, you know, HUD can provide a lot of the data to help go into it, which, you know, if you, like, talk through with a contractor, et cetera. The one area that HUD is promoting is the Envision Centers. Again, with that, there's no real funding. The funding coming from the purpose of Envision Centers, and over the years, it's gone through a lot of different names, the One-Stop Shop, Continuum of Care, but the purpose of the Envision Centers is to really bring in those public-private partnerships. And that's to bring in those employers who are gonna provide those additional gap funding areas to help promote people and jobs, job programs, you know, job programs where, you know, even for like with the chronically homeless, you can put them into, say, a seven-week program where they're not getting paid, but at the end, they're certified, and they will actually be able to obtain an employment. So what HUD is really promoting is to bring those partners in, especially if you're large employers, like up in Dallas, they're working with the Toyota, so that they can be able to train people on a sliding scale of hourly wages. So at the end, if they do actually pass certification, then they will employ them. Same with Amazon and the warehousing. So what HUD is promoting is to bring in those partners to help fill that monetary gap, because it's impossible for a PHA on our fund to be in a position to job-train a lot of people. It's just, as you know, it's not gonna work. You can write a resume, but you can't get them the job. It takes more than that. So there are no real... So there are no real additional funds on the regionalization. What I do wanna say, though, is that as this becomes more of a reality at HUD, I see more conversations of the large agencies of meeting at HUD to say, you know, this is where we're gonna be in 10 years, but this is some of the gaps we see. Because all of those are regulatory, and those can then be entered into as, you know, new statutes maybe down the road. So I would encourage the conversation, which I know Jerry does at headquarters, to be pushing those things that you would need as a gap. I could tell you the gap will not be either, probably not in admin fees or cap fund, but in the, maybe the lessening of regulatory requirements that would help to, fungibility of funds, I think is one of the big ones. So that you're not stuck with these two silos. Because as you know, in any business, you would have one pile of funds, and you could then service your programs. And I know that's a big area that with the Moving to Work Program allows you to move all your funds together. Questions, commissioners?
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you so much.
And then to round out the speakers, the county's housing authority is Executive Director Miguel Hernandez.
Good morning, Judge Vogt. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Donna Hernandez, Executive Director for the El Paso County Housing Authority. I would like to express my gratitude for the Board of Commissioners that you appointed approximately three years ago. Because of them, that is why you have seen the transformation that you have witnessed recently. Revisions to the strategic plan has allowed us to focus on expanding housing services to the county. We have established rapport with mayors and councilmen of the other incorporated cities. As a result, we prioritize certain initiatives and rolled out the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. And in the past eight months, we obtained close to $200,000 in funds to assist homeless veterans, but also a new housing program called Mainstream. And that subsidizes rent for families with disabilities. And that's what we're seeing out there in the family compositions of the cities of Coros, and El Salio, and Clint, and Torneo. We also have the funds to establish a corporation that will assist EPIF with long-term self-sustainability. And the additional cash flow will strengthen the EPIF's opportunity to finance larger projects. That's what you have seen a lot of the housing authorities be able to do. And that's what Donna Wick's kinda speaks about, is that since HUD will not fill in the gaps, then what is the housing authority's plan to fill those gaps? HACCP has their subsidiaries, and so has other Texas housing authorities like the City of Austin. And we're following that model. We're not reinventing the wheel. But based on the commissioners that you put at the county housing authority, these are experienced volunteers that knew that we needed to look at long-term strategies. We're looking at the next three to five years, and we asked, how can we be able to expand housing? And that's one of our strategies, to be able to increase cash flow by not depending on HUD, but starting our corporation. And last thing, I would like for you to consider both the authorities to partner rather than merge. Both authorities can collaborate on tax credit or various other projects that will benefit both the city and the county of El Paso. Any questions for me?
Question, Commissioner?
Other question, and I don't know if it's for you or Irene. My only fear, and I had this conversation with you when you went in on one, is based on the added glance that I see, you said you're spending 130% of your budget?
Yes.
That can't be sustainable.
Yeah, Irene touched on that. We are not, we have never gone over 100%. And we asked Irene to provide us the point of contact that was provided or that information. That is based on a two-year tool, which projects if we continue to lease up at that rate, we will be over 100%. However, when we analyzed the report, they did not take into consideration certain other fees, revenues that we received, such as fraudulent accounts, sorry, reimbursement on fraud accounts. There's clients that did not report, for example, they're set up on a repayment opportunity, and we have an account, and that account splits that amount 50% to admin fees and 50% to cap. And additionally, we do receive administrative fees to administer portability from other housing authorities into the county district. And so based on our current projection, our accountant did verification, our last year's annual submission, and our current budget, we're projected to be at 93%. We have never been over 100%. And we did provide that clarification to Irene.
Can you submit it to me as well?
Absolutely.
To the entire board?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, commissioners?
I do want to also mention that that's why we are also rated high performer. They take a look, one of the indicators there is to spend the monies accordingly. We would have been notified a long time ago that we're going over that amount.
Thank you for being here. And thank you for the work that you do. And I think even in the community, I've heard really great things from United Way and from others, so.
Thank you, Judge.
And then our last speaker is Mr. Gerald Sishon with the City of El Paso's Housing Authority. With a stack of...
Good morning, everybody. So I've got a lot of stuff. I'd like to give it, I don't have enough copies of the housing study we did. So I'd like to, I've got six copies. So I bet you you get one, and everybody else is gonna... So what this was, this cost us $100,000 produced, this is for the city. We are now working directly with the city to try to put together a house, an affordable housing plan, so that as we build, we're building in the right ways and the right locations, not just us, but all local developers as you try to tackle affordable housing. As you know, it's a critical thing as you look at the population. The other thing I wanna give you, and I have kind of second copies, but I just wanna give this to you. This came out from Dominique Bloom. Dominique Bloom is the head of HUD. She's the highest person at HUD who is not appointed by the president. So, you know, you're really high up, you're a director. No, no, this lady's even higher. I'm just gonna give you the first page, it gives you the idea. And what it's talking about is trying to push local entities to create opportunities, because HUD's not gonna be there in the future. You've got lots of problems with housing authorities across the country. You mentioned New York. New York is actually facing receivership, or at least a type of receivership from the federal government stepping in based upon what they had, those issues with lead-based paint and all kinds of other stuff. And finally, we'd like to give you, and it's something that I think most of you guys already have, this was a compare and contrasting of the two housing authorities that kinda gives you an idea of services and opportunities. And what I'm gonna do, while I kind of, it was on you. And so, I would like to start out with this. I think your housing authority for the county is doing a great job. I like Miguel. In fact, I was sad to see Miguel leave, and he left to go over to the housing authority, because I thought he was a fantastic employee, moral, ethical. You guys have got a great person over there. The board is focused on the right things. I was delighted that they called me, tried to help them, and they've done a fantastic job. And I've got nothing but praise for me and Connie and everybody that's over. And everybody knows that when this first discussion happened, they weren't there. And you had the shredding of documents, you had the fights over in Austin, Texas. And Veronica and I were working together to figure out what can we do so that we can become much greater than we are apart. And so as we started taking a look at this, and it's, I've had the benefit of speaking across the country at many events. All the large housing authorities and smaller housing authorities, there's a, there's a change. Your public housing is gonna cease to exist in the next 20 years, flat out. If you read that, that whole thing's about RAD and changing the Declaration of Trust so that HUD no longer owns those units. You are not gonna have what you have today. That's why as we started to take a look at this, we said, okay, listen, how do we beat the reaper? Because if you look at what the backlog is of the $30 billion, you're closing over 10,000 units a year of the 1.3 million that were there, and there's no money, there's no funding, you can't fix it. This is happening everywhere. And we were dealing with the same thing. And we said, okay, how do we leverage $1.3 billion in order to create sustainable housing and guarantee the same number of units for the next 40 years? And we were lucky enough in order to jump on RAD and to make this transition. Now, we are not small. And bigger isn't necessary, but one thing you do get is you get a partner with the housing authority for the city of El Paso that is very sophisticated and is at the cutting edge of housing across the United States. We are right now considered the Google of housing. Nobody, no housing authority in the country has done what we have done. We are being watched. The reason why you have somebody as high up as Donna coming down here to have this conversation is because of what we bring as a partner. You don't bring $1.3 billion to this, this city at no taxpayer expense easily. We brought that. We've created over 3,000 jobs because it's the right thing to do for the residents. We have one focus, and it's the resident, nothing else. I'm not a jobs program, I am not a service provider, I provide housing. I have to know that when somebody goes into that unit, that they're not gonna be paying more than 30% of their income towards housing. So that they can create a way to get out of housing. See, we only wanna be there temporarily and to know that we provide access to services and to other providers that do what we can't do. Like homelessness with Ray. I can't do what he does. What he does, take homelessness, which is a completely different population than what we have directly, and provide the supportive services, that's not what we can do. That's what he does. That's why you partner with the VA. We have over 270 homeless veterans' families that we house right now through the housing. We are part, we are actually one of the most successful housing authorities. We actually, in the last page of that thing I passed out, homeownership, it's a picture of Choya moving into her house with her five grandkids, who's a veteran, that we took from homelessness to homeownership over the course of five years. We've done that four times already. I don't know any other housing authority that has actually done that, or been able to maintain the lease-up of almost 100% of their VAS vouchers. But it's the partnership with the VA, because they give the supportive services that we cannot do. Now, as you look at this, right, think of the mobility of a homeless veteran. If you can live anywhere, they're gonna live where it's closer to the services and to opportunity. Right now, if you get a VAS voucher, where are you gonna live? If you get it in the county? If you're not gonna port out to the city? How do you get access to the VA? Where are your access to the services that you need? Like Texas Tech, or the VA, or anybody else that you would use that would give you those particular services? When you look at the residents themselves, right? We have all these supportive services that are already in there, whether it's homeownership, whether it's food and health, whether it's Zumba. We have 70 different partners that we work with right now that we, that we, that works with. If you look at where we take our kids every summer up to UTEP, kids that, to them, going to UTEP is like going to the moon. And they gotta go there for a week to figure out what college is, and do they wanna go if and when they graduate. And then you look at, okay, so we have the ability to fix the housing. Now, am I gonna provide better housing tomorrow than Miguel provides? No. Or a year from now? No. But what do you wanna be in 20 years? Right? You already know the whole thing's changing. You read Dominique's letter, it's changing. Do you want more housing? Do you want more opportunity for your people in the county? Each tax credit application that we turn in is a $50,000 check that we drop just to do the application for the possibility of losing and getting nothing out of it, every single time. The grants, trying to get USDA funding that right now doesn't make sense, but if we're in the county, it would make sense. The ability to leverage over $1 million to do construction that we could do tomorrow to stabilize your housing with 4% tax credits with the teams that we already have that are available. The reason that for us, this actually became relevant in the timeframe is because, right now, I have a team of 40 people that do nothing but handle construction and relocation. And for the last five years, we've been treating vacancies. So that as you do the construction, because the construction we do is gut rehab construction. We're talking, we take it down to the studs. There's no more asbestos, there's no more lead-based paint. Every single wire's been changed, every single pipe has been pulled out and put PEX piping in. We make sure every single sewer works, we make sure there's a refrigeration air unit on top for every one of our units. And when you do that work, it takes 12 months minimum to do that type of construction. Because it's so significant, massive, and you have to move the families and get them back. The sophistication of that, if you don't have them back in 12 months, being government, remember, you have to pay up to $20,000 on the Uniform Relocation Act for every single family you don't have back in their house within 12 months. Forget the burn on the bonds and forget everything else. Forget paying for the family to go somewhere else as you do the construction. Because as you do the construction, you have an obligation to that family on where they live, to make sure that you take care of them. We have created vacancies by the thousands just so we can do the construction, because the units themselves are not fungible. If you need a three-bedroom unit, I can't move you to an empty one-bedroom unit. I cannot underhouse you. So that normally the vacancies you have to create have to be in excess to make sure that you have the units available. Or you have to go pay into the private marketplace $600 to $700 a month for that family so that they have a place to live as you do the construction. We do that now, and have done over 3,500 units. We're gonna be doing another 3,000 units, and we are closing 18 communities in 2018. We are doing 12 tax credit closes in one year, where almost every developer else in the state does one to two. We are so successful that we cannot get more 9% tax credits, because we are capped at no more than $3 million a year, or $30 million if you look at the aggregate of the 10 years. We are the most successful tax credit developer in the history of Texas. We have received the Bond Buyer Award in New York City by Bond Buyer Magazine at the Wall of Astoria for what we did with the first 1,600 units. So if it's about housing the 80 people that are currently living in the units out there, tomorrow, I'm not gonna give you a change. But in 20 years, when you look at the housing studies, and you look at the opportunities, and you work together with us to figure out, as we work as a region, because remember, our people need mobility across areas. Maybe it's better sometimes when people age to get closer to their family members or via a hospital inside, without having to port their vouchers to get close to them. If we focus on the residents in the residence home, and the one thing I've found is that the residents are smart. They may be poor. And no offense to HUD, I've been amazed at how nobody understands the intelligence of the people and that poverty is not indicative of smartness. And if you give them the opportunity, they will find that opportunity that's in the best interest of themselves, the families, and their children. And right now, we are trapped in our own little areas. They said, okay, Housing Authority City of El Paso, this is your confine. You can't go outside of it. Okay, Anthony, this is it. Here's your vouchers, do it all inside this city. Okay, county, you're limited over here, how are your vouchers supposed to come into the city? You're not supposed to do that. First, a court to the housing authority, who's supposed to take them? Then you guys can start the eligibility process all over. And you push this administration to push this administration. And you say, okay, how do we, how do we do that so that it's in the best interest? That if you are a voucher in El Paso, you don't have to drive all the way to the county just to do that notice? Or if you're in the county, you can do it online without having to drive all the way to El Paso? Because a lot of our people that we provide services to are elderly and disabled. And our elderly, they don't have cars. So when you say, okay, listen, let's give us, give them the opportunity, where are they living now? And what is, what are the opportunities that you really need? I look at this, I look at this as, as an opportunity and a partnership on behalf of the residents for the strategic plan that you are trying to put together for the next 20 years. This isn't a five-year plan, this is a 20-year plan. This is going out and finding funds for USDA's, finding funds for tax grants. It's looking at other opportunities for Section 8 new construction or whatever it is. It's leveraging monies that we have and sophistication that we have right now to the benefit of the entire region and not limiting it because somebody created an arbitrary boundary that said city versus county. This is why, for me, I'm passionate about this. Because I can see every single day how it helps the people. I have the benefit of sitting in the lobby and talking to them. The developments that I'm talking about, again, the photographs in the end, just between downtown and my headquarters, we've done $400 million into this. And when you look at the, the, the population and the quality of life they have now, you look at when the city had to move people out of Durin, Gito, and they left those horrible conditions and they moved to us because we had availability and we could take them into an ADA unit. When there's problems in the county and the Red Cross called because there's flooding, who do they call? They call us. We house them. We're already here. You've got one of the most sophisticated, aggressive housing authorities in the country that must do nothing but partner with you to provide additional services to you. We talked to the residents. We went through this six years ago when we, when we wrote the laws to make this as a possibility. In the end, if you focus on the residents and you focus on what the needs of the county are a decade out, to me, it's clear as to what we can do. But again, this isn't my vision. This is yours. I like them. They're doing a good job. I don't have any problem with that. And his vouchers, if they're in the city, that's another question. Because there's regulations that limit how those vouchers are supposed to be spent and used. I don't know what Ray went through because I wasn't here at that point. It's not about world domination. It's just what's right for the homeless veterans? What's right for the people living in, in current housing? And how do we maximize it knowing that the changes that we know is coming are a reality? And so that housing study that you have, that's strictly the city, take a look at that. There is a lot of information. Again, all of your districts also encompass the entire city. That tells you right now where the infrastructure from the city is being placed. It shows you where the job growth is at. It talks about the specific needs for affordable housing in particular areas. Please use that, all right? If you, if you have any questions on that, I can try to get the, the HRNA down here. They were working with the Rockefeller Foundation out of New York. And Jeff Lyons, who's with TAG, who's done housing authorities all over the United States for the last 50 years, to, to provide additional information. We, we didn't go into the county to do additional studies because of our restrictions and our confines within the city itself. But please use that information because that is, that is a lot of information that directly impacts your constituency. And if anybody has any questions, I know I'm going to both talk to them and I, I just really want to help people. So anybody have any questions, anything I can answer?
I know we haven't had a chance to go through everything you passed out, but are there any questions?
I guess the, the questions will be as we get into the more, the finer details of how it will eventually affect the residents right now, the employees, and what was mentioned earlier.
So if I could, if I could address that. Because I, I said some things to you all across the, the last 24 months and I need, I need to be, I need to be clear. The seismic shift that is happening with RAD is, is, and as I said before, that we were going to tackle and be able to bring on every single employee. At this point, it needs to be looked at as the specific needs of the Housing Authority because we have to run as efficient as private business. What we have done is we have created 200 different corporations. Every single corporation is its own investment in a particular community. Those investors are sitting on my shoulder, looking over my shoulder to make sure that there is no unwarranted or unnecessary expenses. We have to make sure that we run as efficiently as possible. So I just want to be clear that with the employees, we would have to look at every single employee and what they would bring based on where we are. As you know, we are over 9,000 units now. We've built over 2,000 new units in El Paso in the last five years and done over 3,000 rehabs. So I, I'll just, I'll leave it at that. I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thanks. Sure.
Commissioners?
Any questions or any suggested next steps? I know today was just a presentation and I, I know we look, we're not anywhere near probably being able to have any decision. Do you want to just take this back, take a look at the information and then have a conversation in the future?
Was there any other speakers?
That was it for speakers on this particular item.
Okay. Just, just for time, just to let you know, the reason why it's been very relevant for me in the last six months is I'm getting ready to, to, to march towards the end of RAD. I'm going to fill up all my units. The vacancies that I talked about, that if you're going to do the kind of construction, we're going to fill them and they're not going to be available. The team I have, the 40 people that are working full-time on this, when I get done with this, they burn off. I don't need the project managers and I don't need everybody who's doing the, the social work with the people as we make the moves and everything else. It's going to change. And so for me, if I'm already paying 2.2 million dollars a year in salary just for the RAD team, I would like to use them while I'm already paying for those costs so that we can do the best construction, take care of the residents and, and look at those particular needs. So, so for me, you know, it would be a lot easier, quicker, and a lot cheaper so that we could do the most with the county as possible if, if it was a, a time-bound analysis.
What timeline are you looking for?
I, I was really hoping to, to have done this back last summer, but I know we weren't able to be, you know, be able to move that far. Something in the next 30 days, 60 days, so that we can, I can at least deploy team and I know exactly what we're doing. I'm down to, I've almost closed everything. I'm down to almost 800 units left. These units would be additional 80. We, like I said, we can roll these units into the construction with 4%. We can gut these units and fix them. It'll be an investment over a million dollars into, into the county. And we could probably have that, that million dollars in that construction being started by the end of 2019. Again, we would have to talk to the residents, see what their specific needs are. We have to do surveys of every single resident. So to see if they're disabled, what type of units that they would need, or other specifics that would apply to them.
And there is a time, I mean, once, if the court were to make a decision to move in this direction, there is a timeline for the transfer, the process for the transfer. It's not immediate.
HUD has to approve the transfer, is that correct? This week?
And there's, I understand there's a review period?
Yeah. Well, there is. And HUD has, it's like paperwork. It's like 90 days to push the paperwork and to do, and do that. I had some conversations with HUD and with Donna a little bit about that, Maddie, who's on her, on her staff. And so like I said, even saying yes, you still have, you still have lag time before we have to implement it.
I will not deny it. I mean, I think how you asked the question, HUD is not going to deny it. It's you have to follow certain paperwork to go through. There's some amendments to your actual plan, et cetera. So I think once you approve it, that's where I say all those operational issues, that's where you work out all that stuff during that, that period. Is there really all those issues you're talking about to be done? But it's during that period you just do all the paperwork.
The study didn't include, I guess, the, the area in question for the El Paso County Housing Authority, but I mean, I suspect that some of the trends are similar. Here, I guess, for the Mission Valley area, it shows that there's already a, sort of a proliferation of low-income housing and affordable housing is already available. So do you see any opportunities for growth of public housing units? And I think a lot of the questions that Mr. Arcoza raised are fair. You know, what, what, what do you see in terms of, you know, additional public housing units that you all are able to construct? And what's the potential timeline? Just wanted to get your assessment of that.
Sure. So, so public housing, you can't build anymore. So Senator Faircloth stopped public housing from being built back in 1975. The reason why you have 6,500 units in El Paso is because Woodrow Bean, basically, he was the head of our board back in the early 70s. He flew to DC and just walked into the Cabinet Secretary Office of HUD and refused to leave until he had a meeting. By the time he left, Woodrow Bean had secured 3,000 additional units in El Paso. As of 1975, it ended. That's when Section 8 was basically coming in. They said, okay, the new plan under the Nixon administration was to shift this to private landlords. And the private landlords were then going to do this and the housing authorities would then administer those vouchers. And that continued on and they really kind of stopped giving vouchers, but it's not a Faircloth limit. And then that's when the shift to tax credits happened. And so tax credits are the, are the new iteration that was actually constructed for housing authorities to provide affordable housing by leveraging tax credits from private investors to provide the housing. So for public housing specifically, you're not going to create any more public housing. But what you can do is you be, what you do is you'd be creating affordable housing, probably through the use of tax credits. You could also provide housing if you leveraged up budget-based vouchers for the development. And that's when you actually apply the vouchers that the housing authorities have, whether it's the Housing Authority with us or the Housing Authority for the, for the county in order to put that into particular developments and you can monetize that. You also have USDA, right? So you can turn around and you can apply for USDA, which is migrant and Indian farm worker housing. We have some already on the west side, right off of Mesa Hills. We have 50 units of that that we currently have. The, the 202 program has dissipated, so you don't really have access to lots of 202. And then you have different types of grants that, that you can work on for planning grants, CNI, you know, those type of things. And so that would be working in conjunction with you all in order to apply for that to, to maximize where we would go and why, right? Because some of these grants, I mean, you have to get a planning grant first before you apply for the next one and say, okay, how do you maximize the effects? If you just dump it in one location and it's, and it's not put together with a plan, what have you done? If you look at what you have here right now, it's just anybody building wherever they want to so that there's, so that they can win the tax credit specifically. So one of the things that I talked about when I was at Commissioner Hagerty's last meeting, I'm like, okay, listen, for me, inside the city, you have blight. You have areas that are starting to degrade. What do you do to prop up those areas into changing? So up in the Angels Triangle, which when I got here was called the Devil's Triangle, part of the problem is us. What can we do to take down? And the reason why we're actually taking down everything around the Walmart off of Hondo Pass and everything else is because I think we can do so much more with that land to start to move through the Angels Triangle with, working with the city, with, with tax abatements and whatnot, to work with private and public to gentrify particular areas. And so it's not like just us, and, and this is the one thing that I keep trying to get the city to move into. It's not us working unilaterally. It's us working with the city, with the county, to do something that has a greater effect. And that's why, and, and that's when you look at what our current 85 sites are or whatever, not to mention the empty land. What do you do at the Medical Center for Americans? If you look around there, there is no housing for anybody that would work or, or in that particular area. The closest apartments that you have are ours, which is elderly housing and some limited public housing. Why aren't we focusing on where people don't have to own a car and they can walk to work and they can maximize those resources to get out of housing? And that's what you, you need to be thinking. So let's just say you build in the county. Is it, is it only to say, listen, we put a unit in the county and you're stagnant there till you find yourself out of it? Or are you stabilized there until we can, we can get you over to a particular area where you had phlebotomy classes and you can go ahead and work in a different location to move yourself up and out? And that's what you get when, when, when you're much broader and regional. You're actually, the families can actually move seamlessly in and out of the county with, with our services if they're, if they're part of, of a housing authority for their maximum opportunity. Does that make sense? And so, and, and so you, you have to look at it, you have to look at it holistically. And I think that's where that study comes in. And we need to say, okay, is, is what we built sufficient in that particular area? And if we need to shift from where they, where they currently built, does it maximize the opportunity for your residents in the county for their transition? Does, does that make sense, Commissioner? It's, it's a complicated and nebulous analysis to tackle this. And when you do tax credits or you do additional affordable housing, you're working together with the federal government also. You have to do all the work. You have to pay for everything. And then they kind of say yes or no. But that's the one thing that we've been able to do with our relationships and with our balance sheet when you, when you pay for studies like this to, to, to show that there are other opportunities.
Any other questions? So we'll take this information, we'll take a look at it. There were several questions that were asked, Mr. Sishon from the County's Housing Authority, and I have those written down, but I'm wondering if, if we can get those to you. Maybe we can get some kind of answer.
I can answer right now if you want.
Well, I don't, does the court want to get that information now?
I think if you, if you sent, sent it to the court, I think it'd be more expeditious.
No problem. Yeah, I, I wrote them down. I'll verify that what I wrote down is, is consistent with the questions that, that you have. And we'll go ahead and we'll, we'll submit that to you. It's Thursday, maybe by end of business tomorrow? Would that be, would that be timely? Okay. Yeah, we can make sure that's done.
Thank you.
If I can make one comment, I just want to make sure that
Miguel.
The board is aware when it comes to RAD, Mr. Sishon brings up a valid point about is RAD team stopping at the end of this last phase and its units being leased up? One of the options that a housing authority has when doing RAD is applying for tenant protection vouchers. So I'll be concerned that if, once EFSH does get, I am concerned that if the merger does happen and HASEF will have some units available in the city of El Paso, we would be asking some FAVANS residents to leave their family, their school, and their social community out to the city of El Paso. Our plans is to submit our application when we get called and request for tenant protection vouchers so that the families that are being displaced can be placed on these TPVs, stay within the community and live in the private sector. In the meantime, we will have phases in gutting out the apartments and rebuilding them. However, our, our 80 units who were built back in the 80s, they're still in pristine condition. But I would evaluate that with my board to figure out what will be the best decision once we get called from HUD. Just wanted to mention that.
And so where would they go?
Well, so it's, it's similar to what we did at HASEF in the first phase of RAD. Since we were starting, there was no other units. HUD provided us certain tenant protection vouchers to TPVs. And the families are displaced, given a voucher. And it works just like Section 8. They have the right to return back to the unit once it's been rebuilt. And at the end, HASEF gave the families the choice. I think HUD gave some leeway whether they want to opt out of public housing, give that up and stay under the voucher, or return back to the public housing unit. And so the families in the area can then live anywhere in FAVANS, Clint, or the surrounding communities like San Antonio.
Any other questions, Commissioner? Okay. We appreciate all of you for being here and thanks to the county team for the work that they did in putting together the information. And thank you for being here all the way from Houston, Dallas?
Houston.
Houston. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we still have quite a few items left on the agenda. Do we, I know that Border Plaque has a meeting at 1 o'clock and they were item six. Do we want to just keep going through the items? Does anybody need a break?
I'd love a quick break, but I can also see Border Plaque's out there if they're ready.
Appreciate you. If you saw that. Commissioners, what are your thoughts in terms of lunch? Just a quick break? Okay, let's take a five-minute break. We'll probably be here for another hour and a half.
I've had podcasts before. That's my initial thought. I think a five-minute break. Commissioners, a short recess for five minutes.
To make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice-of-the-peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the county of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coastrx.com. Happy savings. Did you know the county of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number nine one five five four six two zero four eight. The three forty-six District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at nine one five five four six two one one nine, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number nine one five five four six two zero four eight.
Please turn on the switch.
Would you like a mint? What? I have every right to admit I'm being hungry. There's a rule.
Commissioners Court has reconvened a special open session.
You don't get this way by skipping meals, Sonny Jim. Sorry.
Item six.
Item number six, receive a presentation from Borderplex and Consultant LB Schmidt Associates LLC regarding the Borderplex Alliance Air Service Initiative. Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Robert Palacios from the Borderplex Alliance. I'm going to be giving a presentation here on the Borderplex Alliance Air Services Initiative. I have also Luke Schmidt, a consultant of LB Schmidt and Associates, who's been helping us out with this project, and he'll come and make part of the presentation as well. So I know we're pressed for time, so I'll kind of go through this quickly because I think there's some stuff that you all have already seen. So the reason we've started this project is that the current level of air service in El Paso is inadequate in terms of the number of direct flights that we have, the number of cities that can be reached via a direct flight. And so the solution, we've launched this project to improve the air service out of the El Paso International Airport by increasing the number of cities that can be reached via a direct flight. This is a mission of our organization. We see this as a regional project. It's backed by the Borderplex Alliance, and we're glad to have had support from you all as well and from the city of El Paso. That's leadership. This kind of goes into what I was saying before. We're not competitive when it comes to fewer cities and the number of flights that leave out of here every day and the number of destinations that you can reach via a direct flight, which has hurt us in terms of our business recruitment efforts and also impacts quality of life for residents that live here. It impacts Fort Bliss, our convention, and tourism business as well. And so it's not just El Paso, but of course, it's the rest of the region that is impacted by this as well. El Paso International Airport is essentially the major airport for the southern part of New Mexico. And also, we get a lot of people traveling from Juarez and other parts of Mexico as well because the airport there does not have any flights to the United States. So what's impacting the expansion right now, there's a number of different things as far as why it's been a challenge for us to get some of these flights, particularly when we're talking about some of these markets that are farther away. You know, the airlines are taking into account demand, the type and size of aircraft that are needed, availability of pilots, revenue potential, and expansion opportunities when you compare us to other markets. So we are competitive, but we feel that we just need this little extra bump, this extra kind of incentive to make us even more competitive and finally sort of landing some of these flights. So the airport has provided incentives. They've been very great partner. But really where the community can step in is with this minimum revenue guarantee fund, which is of course money that is raised by the community, which will then be used, should the airline not meet their revenue targets, to share in some of that loss. It's a way for us to show the airline that we're serious about recruiting this flight, that we understand the risk they're taking and we're willing to share in that risk that we believe as a community that this flight will also be successful. This gives you a little more information on the way this process worked. I know I've talked to all of the commissioners here and the judge individually on this. And of course, it's been used successfully in a variety of other markets. Indianapolis and Columbus, and I think Luke can share a little bit more about that. They have used the MRG strategy successfully to recruit some of their first flights, both from these metro areas to the west coast and also some of their first flights to Europe. So I'll turn it over to Luke. I think he has a little more information on this market.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here, and I'll be happy to answer any questions in just a minute while we wrap this up. My job in all of this has been to work with the Borderplex Alliance and the city and the county to put together this strategy that has been used successfully in quite a number of other cities around the country, and we hope to implement it here. Let me just kind of walk you through, let's see, I think we missed that one slide. Essentially, what we want to do is put together a pool of money that can be used as an incentive from the community to incentivize airlines to come in to El Paso and put in these new flights. And I can attest to you, in the handout that Jose just passed out, there is a copy of the newspaper article from three different cities and how this was done. Indianapolis, at the time, their goal was to get a flight, a nonstop flight to San Francisco, which they didn't have one. So they raised one and a half million dollars and were able to conclude a deal with United to put in a nonstop flight. It was successful. They started with an Airbus A three nineteen, a hundred and twenty-eight passenger airplane. It grew very quickly, seventy-five percent, eighty-five percent load factors. They added, they expanded it to a larger aircraft and then put in a second daily round trip. That was followed by Alaska Airlines coming in with a round trip of their own. And then Southwest put in a flight to Oakland. So in the space of about a year and a half, two years, they went from having no flights to the Bay Area to having three or four daily round trips. In Columbus, Ohio, a similar situation. They were looking for a nonstop flight to the Bay Area. They raised one point seven million dollars and did a deal with Southwest to put in a flight to Oakland. A project that I've been working on in Louisville, which we just concluded. Our number one most underserved market out of that airport was Los Angeles. Louisville was the largest city in the east that did not have a nonstop flight to California. And so we worked to put together the incentive package, began recruiting that flight back in March. And in late September, American Airlines informed us they were ready to make the commitment. We did a contract, and the flight was announced on October twenty-fifth. So this strategy works. You know, one of the questions that you might ask is, is it necessary to do this? And the answer is no, you don't have to do it. But if you don't do it, you're going to find that El Paso is not as competitive as it needs to be in this arena. The slide that Robert went through a moment ago that talks about how competitive it is to get new flights. If you're in the airline situation, they're literally besieged by communities every day that want to come in and they want a nonstop flight here or they want a nonstop flight there. And so the airlines have to do a lot of due diligence. You know, we can take in all kinds of good market data. Very compelling story as to why putting a flight to, in this case, New York or Washington makes sense. But on the other hand, then the airline looks at it, they look in terms of passenger potential, both annual and on a daily basis. They look at aircraft availability and revenue potential, profit potential. And then they look at El Paso versus other cities that are looking for new routes, and they look to see which one is going to be giving them the best edge. So this minimum revenue guarantee strategy has been very successful. It's been used in large markets, small markets, international markets, but it's never been used here. And so that's why what we would like to do is respectfully ask you all to consider a grant towards this initiative of four hundred and seventy-five thousand. The net benefit and what this is at its heart is it's an economic development project. It's designed to retain existing jobs, make El Paso and this region more accessible, and create new jobs going forward. So be happy to stop here, because I know you've had a tight schedule, answer any questions that you have. And I do want to recognize Jose Canones, who's a member of our steering committee with us. Jose's been very, very helpful in helping us understand the overall market and particularly how this all interacts with the county. Jose, we appreciate that.
Can I ask where this four seventy-five came from? So I know when we met originally several weeks ago, that number was about half of that almost, I think.
To be honest, that number, Robert?
Has it not changed?
I'm sorry.
Has it not changed? I don't remember it being so high.
I think we had originally said, if I remember correctly, I think we had originally talked about the range of four to six hundred thousand would be the contribution. I don't remember it being half that. I think the lowest we had said was four hundred, and then we had picked four seventy-five because it is roughly in the middle of that range, slightly on the lower end. But that's kind of how we arrived at that figure. And then also kind of our rough calculations were that if we are looking at a total of maximum, let's say one point five million of the MRG that we'd be requesting, you know, roughly five hundred came from the city, five hundred from the county, and then five hundred from the private sector. If there's, you know, potentially a little bit more than that, we'd probably go back to the private. If there's, you know, potentially a little bit more than that, we'd probably go back to the private sector or from the state of Texas.
Yeah, we do want to reach out to the state because in most every case where you've done one of these, where this has been done, you have state participation and so we definitely want to work on that.
And how long, I know that it may be helpful for us to make some kind of commitment in order for the state or others to, I mean, chip in. But have we seen any commitments come in from the private sector yet?
We've had a lot of calls on, and when I say calls, in-person meetings with companies throughout this area to talk about this. This is a brand new project and it's not one that people were aware of. And so what, and of course, it's not a project that any of these companies had budgeted for. So a lot of the companies right now are taking this into consideration. We've had, I think, very favorable response. Once we explain it and what the value to the companies will be in terms of increased accessibility, they seem to like it and, but a lot of cases, they have headquarters that are in other places. They have to run a flight goal. But there's no question that if you all are able to support this, this will have a very positive impact on helping us close the deal with a lot of these folks. There's no question. If, you know, somebody has to jump in the pool at the beginning, but this, we think is, this is, this is the kind of thing that if we're successful and bring in a flight to New York, which right now, one of the companies that's based here has, is based, their headquarters is actually up in northern New Jersey. And they've told us several times that it takes longer for their headquarters people to travel here than it does to fly to Europe. And they don't say that as a compliment. You know, that's a real source of irritation. And so that's really what we're trying to do here is make this area more accessible to key markets. We've talked with a lot of folks that are affiliated in one respect or another with Fort Bliss and Holloman Airport Space. And there's a real desire on their part to get a flight to the DC area, obviously because there's so much traffic back and forth. You know, another thing to keep in mind, Fort Bliss, of course, is on a growth curve, which is terrific. There's still so much more they can do. Fort Bliss is probably the largest army base in the country that does not have a nonstop direct access flight to DC. Everybody expects that within the next year or two, there's going to be another round of base realignment enclosure or frac as it's called. And the bases that are most competitively positioned are the ones that are going to really thrive in the next round of frac. And so this is getting a nonstop flight to the DC area would make Fort Bliss, as well as White Sands and Holloman, more competitive and hopefully would bring more commands and more units in as opposed to possibly losing some. So that's, again, this is an economic development project that is core and it's pretty important.
Commissioner Lael?
Yes, sir. A question, a couple of questions. That 475, is that coming entirely from the county or is that a split between the county and the city?
In this case, it would be entirely from the county. We are discussing this also with the city and we'll be making a similar request to the city.
When you say similar, is that 475 or is it?
A give or take, yeah. We haven't worked out the exact amount yet, but I think that's the expectation.
That you have in your presentation, county staff when flying to these markets, what does that mean?
Oh, what that means, really, when, what we're asking people to do and also enclosed in the handout is a copy of our pledge form. Now, the pledge form really is more attuned to the business community. But what we're asking businesses to do really are three things. Number one, if we're successful in recruiting flights to one or more of these markets, that we're asking those employees that are traveling by commercial airline to one of those markets, say New York or Washington or San Francisco, that for the first two years that flight operates, that they will pledge to use that flight. It's really kind of a no-brainer because you want people to use the flight, build up planes. Secondly, we're asking them to communicate to their vendors, suppliers, customers, anybody that may be coming here from one of those locations to meet with them, that they would communicate the availability of a new flight, encourage them to use it. Again, that's just a tool to try to get people to use some new flights. And then third is the financial request.
Can I ask if you have additional questions? I don't know. I mean, this wasn't something that we necessarily pledged it for during our discussions. I don't know if the court has any interest in looking at the Economic Impact Fund or something like this. That's the only other place I can think of that we'd be able to draw down that amount of money at this point without it being a line item in the budget. But what is the timeline? I mean, when will you get before city council and?
Well, that's a, that's a great question. Let me also, I think, interpret your question a little bit. You're probably also wondering is when would we actually have, when would you all have to actually make the expenditure? And the way this works, right now, what we're looking for are commitments or pledges to back this up. And we would not invoice or expect payment unless or until we're successful in executing a contract or service with an airline to one of these key markets. So for example, New York is our number one market. Once we're at a point where we have enough pledges in hand to go to the market, we would begin recruiting. But the very earliest that we would expect a commitment from an airline to serve this market would be sometime probably mid to late 2019. So what we're asking for now is a pledge that we can match against other pledges. And then we start the recruiting process and then if we're successful in getting the service, we'll negotiate a contract that was commonly called an air service agreement. And then, once that's done, then we would invoice for the pledges. Because all that money would then go into a dedicated escrow account for that purpose only. That would be managed by the Borderplex Alliance. And then, once the flight starts, if there was a need to draw it down, we would draw it down. And it would only last for a year, two years at the most. This is not a long-term subsidy. It's really not a subsidy. It's a stopgap. Short term, while a new flight builds to a profitable basis. It's very likely and very possible the flight would be profitable from the very beginning. It wouldn't be necessary to draw this down at all. Then what we would do is whatever money is left over, we would roll it into a new route going forward. So this is not a three-week exercise. It's a long-term exercise to get better service.
Thank you all very much for the presentation today and also for coming to our offices. Since you all came to our offices, I've been thinking about, there's one thing that just, I mean, that would give me, I mean, if there's anything that gives me hesitation, it's this and it's when it comes to, you know, setting up this fund. I think we talked about the fact that, you know, you say like the first, you know, they're supposed to generate a certain amount of revenue each month, basically, or I don't know if it's monthly or quarterly. I can't remember.
It can be either.
So it's sort of, basically, they generate enough money. I'm sorry, they don't generate enough money, for example, the first six months of the year. But then they, and so we have to pay out. And then, but then they generate more than enough money the second six months of the year. We don't, I mean, we still take that loss.
Yeah, let me.
That's, that's, that's the only thing that gives me the, I mean, gives me any, you know, some.
Let me kind of walk you through how this will work. And again, this has been done in lots of markets across the country. It's not anything that we're new. It's new to El Paso. You know, we're not doing an experiment here by any means. This is, this is an established process. The way it works is we will negotiate a contract. Let's just say hypothetically, we're successful in recruiting United to put in a nonstop to Newark. We will negotiate a contract. United will tell us what their monthly, or it could be quarterly, revenue target is. And let's just say hypothetically, it's 100,000 a month. It'd be more than that, but let's just say for clarity, it's 100,000 a month. Then the flight starts. And so at the end of the first month, United will come back to us and they'll tell us how they did. And let's just say, well, I should have said a million a month. Let's just say it's a million a month. And they come back after the first month and they say, well, we did 900,000. So they were 100,000 short. So we would then write them a check for 100,000 to make up that difference. Essentially gets them to the break-even point. The next month they come in and they said, and they tell us, well, we did 1,100,000. That's correct. They're in the profit. They're in the black. They made 100,000. We don't give them anything, no payment. And then the community will then get a credit in the amount of 100,000 or equal to the profit that carries forward to the next reporting period that can be used.
Well, it wouldn't be a credit. We would just keep our money.
Yes, yes, we'd just keep it.
But it's a credit towards the next month. So if they come in at 900,000 the next month, we don't owe them that 100,000.
That's exactly right. It's a wash. And obviously, the goal is for the flight to become more and more successful as it goes forward, more and more profitable. I mean, in a perfect world, it would be profitable from the very beginning and you'd never draw any of this down and you'd roll it into a new route afterwards. But there is, you know, the likelihood that it may take a while to get it there and so you make it up. But for the months or quarters that they're profitable, then the community gets the benefit of that. And that goes to offset any future loss that might occur because you've made money. And, or they've made money, but the community has the credit in hand to work that through.
And how long is that agreement for?
Agreements are generally one, sometimes two years. The one that we just did in Louisville is a two-year agreement. But a number of these have been one years, one year. And then it goes away. That's it.
Have you seen instances where they'll come in and we'll do a one-year agreement and we've got this pot of money they're losing quarterly or every month? It doesn't really pick up to where they would like it to be. And then they depleted the account and then they say, well, we're out.
That's a great question. And I think that obviously what you want to do is you want to have a great understanding with the airline going in as to how this will all be measured. One of the things that we've learned is that you want transparency with the airline so that they're sharing with you how they're doing. If, for example, it just, in spite of everybody's best effort, it just doesn't work and it's starting to lose money and there just doesn't appear to be any end in sight, most likely, everybody would come to an agreement that there's no point in just going through all that fun. If it's just not going to work, it's just not going to work. And so the agreements always have an exit clause. Both parties would agree, well, we gave it our best shot, but rather than burn up all the community's money, we're just going to stop at a certain point. Now, one thing, airlines, when they make the decision to serve a route, they will have done, they've both wanted due diligence on their part internally. And they probably won't even make the decision to start the route unless they feel really, really certain that that's going to be a successful route. Because from their point of view, it's a PR nightmare. If they start a route, six months later, it just doesn't work and they have to pull it. And you may not think it's that big of a deal, but to them it really is because there will be some, there'll be some hard feelings on the part of the community. Well, you know, they came in here, big flash, and then they pulled right out. So I guess what I'm trying to say is that I, you can really feel pretty good that if they decide to serve a route, they have done it knowing, they've looked at every possible outcome and what their revenue expectation is, what the passenger count expectation is. And yeah, once in a while, they may miss it, but most likely, they're pretty good at what they do. They don't want to burn up all the community's money anymore than we do. And so if it just looks like it isn't going to work, we can stop.
Commissioner Lael?
You had mentioned that if it's successful from day one, then the county's portion would be, at the end of the year, if it's just black all the way through, that it could be rolled over into another route. But at that point, do we have the option to say, well, we don't want to go another route. We want our money back?
You could, yes. You certainly could say that. And that would be, my expectation would be if you all agree to make this pledge, at some point, we would probably do some kind of a written MOU or an agreement that would explain, you know, how that would work. That certainly could be a provision that you could put in there. I would encourage you to allow the rollover because that makes our job easier if we want to go into another route to Washington or San Francisco as opposed to having to come back and, you know, ask for more periodically. But that's up to you all.
And you mentioned Washington. Is Baltimore an alternative?
Yes, it is. There are three airports serving the Washington Baltimore area. Reagan National's the close-in airport, then you have BWI or Baltimore, and then you have Dallas. All three would be likely candidates. And our expectation would be we would make a run at all the airlines that serve those three markets that would make sense for El Paso. And hopefully get at least one to commit and say yes for that.
When are you going to the city again?
So we're working on scheduling that. Right now, it'll probably be in early December that we have that meeting.
And I just, I mean, one of the, some of the information that I asked for after the individual meeting had to do with, you know, other, other cities that have done this and what the division has been between public and private investment? Not yet. I don't think so. At least I.
Well, my other issue is we have a much smaller budget than the city and the fact that we're 50-50 again, I don't know. And it makes you go, well, I don't know if it's an even keel on division.
Yeah, do we have examples to Commissioner Stouts' point of the split between public and private for these other communities that have done this too?
It really, it really varies across the board. The majority, the majority of the funding generally comes from state government and then local government, city and/or county, and then private sources after that. The ones that I'm most familiar with, Indiana, Kentucky, Ohio, the state governments put in a fair amount of money to get to this point. And as I mentioned earlier, one of the things we're planning is to reach out to the state of Texas to make them aware of this and see if they'll be willing to participate. I would hope that they would. And, you know, one of the things I've observed, this is a terrific community, a terrific market, but it's so far removed as far as being out in far west Texas from what I kind of refer to as a hyper-growth area of Dallas and Austin and San Antonio and Houston. You know, those areas are growing so fast that candidly, the airports in there, the communities don't have to do this. Because the airlines know in Austin, where you've got an double-digit growth rate, they're going to, that flight's going to be successful. Here, it's most likely going to be successful, but it takes a little extra effort to get it. So that's why, that's why communities like Indianapolis, Louisville, Columbus, El Paso, Richmond, Virginia, they're all doing this because it's the quickest way to get service and to get it done.
I guess my other question, you've mentioned now like four or five times, the state's using it as number one contributor and the most important part. But I'm also hearing that we haven't talked to the state yet. And I guess I don't understand why we've gone through three phases and haven't brought in the state and had any conversations with this thing yet.
Well, one of, my experience has been when we do that, one of the very first questions the state government folks are going to ask is, how are the local people supporting this? They want to, you know, they're going to want to see some assurance that local government is on board, private community sector is on board. So yeah, we could have gone there first, but they probably would have said, come back and see us a little bit later.
And one other thing to add there, so we have actually spoken to the state. Unfortunately, we found it a little bit more difficult in Texas than other cities and other states have, have, have had it in terms of getting funding from the state. I think one of the issues that we face is because Texas does already have, you know, four major cities, two of them with two airports, all of them with airports larger than ours. The incentive for them, it may not seem as high to participate in something like this than for, you know, a state like Indiana or Kentucky, which may only have one or two major airports. So that's, I think, that's something that we've had to face. There's funding outlets that exist in other states that, from what we can tell, simply don't exist in Texas in terms of using funding to do this kind of a project. So we've had to be a little bit more, do a lot more research and investigation and have a lot more conversations to find where that money might exist. I mean, we're assuming it does exist, but it hasn't been as straightforward as it has been in other communities. So we have had those conversations and we're continuing to have them. But we also think that we'd be in a stronger position with the state if we can come to them and say, you know, the local governments have already participated.
So what is, what is the strategy then? I mean, who are you going to talk to? To our state delegation to see if they're going to ask for an appropriation request within the next legislative session? The governor's office, the economic development department for the state? I mean, like, what's the strategy for even?
Well, initially, what we're hoping to find is a source of funds that won't require legislative action. And, you know, my assumption is that there is probably such a source of funds in place. We just haven't found it yet. But yeah, the state department of economic development would be a place we would want to go, the governor's office perhaps. And down the road, perhaps it will require some legislative assistance and we're starting that now. So we want to.
Which one, which one happen for another two years if you don't get it in this time, you know, till March? To ask for anything like that. So I mean, that's, time is of the essence, I think, if you're, I mean, it, it, it's kind of eye-opening to me that, you know, we're a month away from, a month and a half away from the legislative session starting and see like a real strong strategy. I mean, we're still looking for a bucket of. I mean, we're still looking for a, a bucket of, a bucket of money that we don't even know exists yet and and I think y'all need to really pick it up and start reaching out to our state delegation if that's, because I I doubt that there's a pot of money that that exists right now that you can pull from, to tell you the truth. I I just, I I find it really hard to, to, to believe that and and so, I mean, that's, time is of the essence, I think, and I'm, we're, I think we're a little behind the curve for this session, to tell you the truth.
Well, I I agree. Yeah, and you're exactly right. We've got to move on this as quickly as we can and that's another reason why here we are today and it'd be very, very helpful to us if we find ourselves in a position where we can share with those folks that the county government has come through with a pledge, again, not a check, a pledge, and so that we can start building this pool of funds because that's what we have to do.
What about us, Chris?
Yes, we're reaching out up there as well. I was up there yesterday as a matter of fact. And we're going to be working primarily through the Chamber of Commerce to get to the business community and probably some folks that are related to White Sands Missile Range and Holland Air Force Base. They've got a, they definitely have an argument this time.
I would also be, you know, so I'm, you know, I'm, I'm curious about the information, of course, that I requested in the meeting, the one-on-one meetings that has to do with public-private. I mean, we've talked about the state, I understand that, but I also would like to see what, kind of what the private sector has been involved with in other, in other communities and and also, I'm curious as to, you know, how the, I don't know, I mean, there are examples of of these new programs starting, but I'm, I'm curious as to communities that, that have actually had success with this and 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 how much money has actually been able to roll over and and, you know, I mean, there has to, there has to be other examples of what you're asking to do us, just to kind of have...
Even data.
Some data on, 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 I mean, obviously the factors are going to be different and things like that, but I'm still curious as to, as to, you know, how many, you know, in the, in the last five years or, I don't know, you know, other communities that have done the same thing, how successful has it been, how much money have they lost or or how many flights have they gained, you know, things like that, I think are important to...
Well, I'll give you a couple of answers. First of all, these contracts that the airlines do with the communities are highly competitive and they're, to be candid, they're very, very hard to get a hold of. I have two or three in my file that are redacted with some of that information that you want. So it's, it's very difficult to find out exactly how much they might have spent on drawdowns. In certain cases, sure, they drew some down, I'll give you...
I mean, if it's public money, there should be public, there should be...
Something recordable.
Yeah, I mean, if, if it's public money that's being spent in any, in any state, then there should be a record as to how much...
Well, some of these are run through private entities, so they kind of get around that. And and I'm not trying to give you a short answer, it's just that it is very difficult to get that. Let me give you an example of a small market that did this very successfully. So it's, it's not an apples and apples comparison with El Paso, but it is one that really, really worked. Manhattan, Kansas, which is roughly a hundred miles to the west of Kansas City, it's the home of Kansas State University and also the home of Fort Riley, so they have two primary economic drivers there. And for years, Manhattan had what was called essential air service, which was a federally subsidized flight that was a nineteen-passenger prop plane that would make a trip east to west and west to east once a day. The federal government subsidized that flight for years, lost money for years. Nobody liked it, they didn't want to fly the plane, people hated it. And so finally, the Manhattan community decided they wanted, they wanted to do better. So they set a community goal of getting a flight to Dallas on a jet. And so in that case, they partnered with the city of Manhattan, with Manhattan Chamber of Commerce, with the state of Kansas, they raised about $2.8 million for an MRG. And then they went to American and pitched that market. American agreed and they agreed to put in two daily round trip flights with a fifty-passenger regional jet. The first month came and they knew they were going to lose money probably the first couple of months, just to get people used to using that flight. They drew down, out of the 2.8 million, they drew down about 200,000. And from that point, the flights were profitable. In fact, it was so successful that they amended the contract, they added a third daily flight, round trip to Dallas. And then they amended it again and added two daily round trips to Chicago, all jets. And so here's a community that had two flights a day, nineteen-passenger turboprop planes that nobody liked, that nobody used, that the federal government subsidized, that lost money. They put a pool of money together, only drew down 200,000 and went to five daily jet round trip flights to two of the largest hubs in the, in the world. A huge success for that community. So successful, they had to expand their air terminal. They went from roughly 13,000 inflamments a year to about 90,000. Now, again, smaller market than El Paso, the conception, it shows you, if you get the right kind of service, what can happen and and what's beneficial to the community. So that was a terrific investment. I don't think you can find anybody out there that would tell you that was bad money spent. Certainly in Indianapolis, they started with a million and a half dollars. Now, I don't know what the drawdown was, there was some, I don't know what it was. But they went from having no service to San Francisco, none on the horizon. They got United to come in and put in the flight with an A319, it it took off, they expanded it to an A320, a much bigger airplane, then they put in a second daily round trip. Then Southwest came in with a flight to Oakland that they didn't have before. And then Alaska came in with a flight after that. So again, from that initial one and a half million dollar pool, they went from no service to San Francisco to three or four daily round trips. I mean, I, I think you have to look at that as being a success. Again, I don't know what the drawdown was, there was some, but I don't know what it was. Same thing in Columbus, they, they raised a million seven there, there was some drawdown, but they got the flight that they wanted. And again, in their case, both those cities wanted service to San Francisco because of all the high-tech entrepreneurial work that was underway in their communities. And they needed a link to the Bay Area, to Silicon Valley, so that there could be much easier travel. One thing we've heard is that in the high-tech world, all the money for investment is pretty much in the San Francisco area. And what we've been told is that if the people that are making those investments in San Francisco, in the communities like Indianapolis or Columbus, if they can't go nonstop to check out the opportunity, they just don't even look at it. So this is the world we're in. It's all about accessibility and that's what we want to do here in El Paso. I mean, you have a nice airport here with good service, it it can be better. And this, you know, we're working with the airport, they're good partners. But if you want a flight to New York and if you want a flight to Washington and you want it sooner rather than later, this is the kind of strategy that you're going to have to put into place. Last comment. In Louisville, for years, Los Angeles had been the number one target market for a nonstop flight. Louisville was the largest city in the east without a, a nonstop California. And the, the, the strategy that they used was just at some point the airline will, will bring it in. Well, they just didn't do that. You have to be aggressive to go out and get the stuff and and that's, that's how it works.
It's just hard to, to, uh, look at expending this amount of money, I mean, just on anecdotal.
Well, it's not anecdotal, it's not anecdotal. I mean, I, I know, I, I don't know the drawdowns in some of these cases, but I do know the fact that they, these communities went from having no service to particular markets to having service that was successful.
I think some more information on the state side would be helpful too, talking to our delegation and figuring out whether or not, I mean, I would think the governor's office would have some kind of money through their economic development initiative.
We keep them in touch and then they don't have anything like that. So it's, it's, we've been talking with the state legislatures about, about doing this and then also we've been talking with the city's lobbyists that they have in Austin to see, you know, what connections they might have, but...
The mayor should have some great connections, right?
Well, that's the hope, yeah, that's the hope. But the economic development office, I mean, that was one of the first places we went because that's the office that in other states has been critical to making this happen. And they basically told us, you know, this isn't something that we would be able to help with. The tourism office, the governor's tourism office would be able to offer some assistance, but only once the flight has started with marketing the flight in other parts of the state, other parts of the country. But as far as contributing to the MRG, you know, that, that, that doesn't exist. And we're trying to work other angles, but you know, as Luke has mentioned before, when we're trying to do that, it gives us a much more credible case if we can say, you know, the local community, the governments here locally have already contributed and they're already bought in. I think it makes it a lot easier for us to, to ask them.
It really will because if we just go to Austin, sight unseen, they're, they really are going to ask, where, where is the local support and what kind of support are you building? And so it's always a matter of timing. But in this case, what we're really asking for today is a pledge, not a check, because the check is written, yep, we're successful in executing a contract for service. That's a whole nother issue down the road. And, you know, we think having this pool of pledged funds will make it very, much easier to get that commitment. But it, it will help us, no question, as we work with the state to get this done. But let me, I'll give you one other real quick example. In Indiana, and Mark, not Mark, or Robert is right, Indiana, Kentucky, some of these other states don't have as many major airports as you do in Texas. But the state of Indiana figured out very quickly how successful this really could be. And after they did the one and a half million dollar project to get United to San Francisco, which had local support, they got on the bandwagon and they raised through the legislature, in their case, a $20 million pool for additional flights from other Indiana airports. And they're working now on a $30 million pool. But out of that $20 million pool, they were able to set aside $5 million for Indianapolis to get an international flight to Europe, which they had not had before. Delta launched a, a nonstop to Paris back in May from Indianapolis, which really is going to put that community on, on the map, much more than it has been. So again, recognizing that you've never worked with something like this before, I can understand the skepticism and and wanting to make sure you, you fully understand it, but where this has been done, it's been incredibly successful and the communities have benefited. There's no, no doubt about that.
And I think just to go off of Luke's point, one last thing, I mean, regarding any concerns, I, there's basically a couple of places this could fail. And I mean, if this doesn't work at all and we, we get this pledge and we fail to recruit a flight, it, it, it has no financial impact on you all, no money is ever collected from you guys. The other place that it theoretically could fail is that we collect the, we get the flight, we collect the funding and it's a total failure and we use up every last dollar that you've contributed. But the airlines, obviously, are going to do enough due diligence to make that a very, very, very unlikely scenario. It's very unlikely they would even consider starting the flight if they thought that that was going to be the outcome. So even though it's theoretically within the realm of possibility, the, the likelihood that that scenario takes place, which would probably be the worst-case scenario, is highly unlikely, the chance that this is just a, doesn't work at all and, and there's no results, we, we think it's also fairly low, but if that is the, the case, then it really has no impact on, on, on the county.
This is a great question. So how are the monthly revenue targets established?
I guess since that's so critical and, you know, the credits that either an airline would give or the, the amount of funds that would be expended to meet the revenue.
The airline generally will tell the community what their revenue target is for that particular route. And obviously, it, it varies on the length of the route, the distance, the type of airplane blown and so forth. For the type of flights that we're looking at here, I think because of the distance from El Paso to the northeast, you're looking at probably an Airbus A319 to, to operate that flight. But they would, they would come in and they would say, okay, it, it costs X dollars per flight to run this flight, then that's their, that's their target. And, and then obviously, what, you know, has to happen is, is that they need to fill the plane up as much as they can. The fares differ, it depends on if you buy your ticket way in advance, you get a cheaper flight, if it's last minute, like most business people, you're going to pay pretty much full fare. Are you in the first-class cabin versus economy? So all those factors come into play. You know, one of the things the airport does is they have a marketing support for a new flight that qualifies, which any of these would qualify. So there would be a promotional push before the flight starts to make sure that the consumer's aware that that flight will start on X date and, and hopefully everybody gets behind it. But one thing that we would also have is in the contract with the airline, if for ever any reason we had doubts about the numbers that they were reporting, we would have the right to audit their books at our expense for finances related to that particular flight. And that's a standard provision in these contracts.
Yeah, and I, I'm very supportive, I, I know that this will lead to, to growth in our community. The only area that I'm a little skeptical on is the 475. I, in my mind, I envision a three-way split between us, the city, and it's up to you all to find out the private sector out there.
There's, I understand where you're coming from and there's, there's no magic formula. And I will tell you, the ones that I'm familiar with in the other parts of the country, there was no magic formula that it was a third and a third or a half and a half. It just varies by market as to what everybody is able to do. And I think in this case, our feeling was in early discussions that, you know, going back to the range that Robert mentioned initially, the 400 to 600,000, we felt that that was an appropriate figure and that's kind of where we settled on the 475. I mean, I would love to say, you know, we could go to the city and get twice that amount. Who knows if we can or can't? Our job right now is to try to secure pledges so that we start building this pool of funds so that we can go to the airlines and start pitching these routes. And again, I can't emphasize enough that what we're asking for right now is a pledge, not a check. And the only time you would write the check is if we're successful in getting the flight. And that's a great reason to write one, because if you could get a nonstop from here to New York and connect El Paso with the financial capital of the world, that is a win-win for this community, there's no question about it. So it's a performance-based deal. We, we, we're asking upfront for pledges so that we can go out and do our job to ultimately recruit these flights. And I don't think there's any question that if you get a flight from here to Washington or here to New York, you're going to see new jobs coming back to the community with expansions. And if Fort Bliss all of a sudden is more attractive as a base, who's to say that the DOD won't put more commands in here or more units in here?
I, I, I also, you know, reservations, I mean, I, I definitely see the necessity for this, I see, you know, that it's, you know, that you have, you know, we could reap benefits. But I, I mean, I also have reservations with the fact that the county whose budget is half the size of the city's budget is being asked to pay for half of the public sector's investment in this, you know?
Well, we can certainly, I don't want to speak for Robert, but we, we can certainly do our best to reflect that in, in discussions that, you know, we might have. I mean, again, my job is to try to help facilitate the development of this pool of funds so we can get to work and, and go get these flights.
Right. We can definitely reflect that, you know, we're, we're still working with the city on a final amount for, for the contributions that we're going to ask for them, so we'll certainly take that into account. But, you know, we also see this as an opportunity really for the county to be the leader in, in doing this. I mean, it's one thing, I, obviously your budget is smaller and we respect that, but we do see this as an opportunity for this to be something driven by the county, the county to be the leader in this. When we hopefully announce that flight, you know, the county will be front and center throughout this entire process. And, and that's a relationship we'd love to have with you guys. You know, we think that, that this is a, a great opportunity for, for the county to show that leadership. And so we will reflect the budget size when we go to the city, but, you know, we also see this as, as a place where the county will take the lead over the city in, in moving this project forward.
Mr. Bettes?
I also want to say, I'm very supportive of this initiative and I, I think it's a very prudent use of funds. I mean, the fact that it's, it is a pledge, we're not signing a check at this point, that, that we would only sign a check in the event that it's successful.
That's right.
I think that's also very much an added benefit. But also conscious of my colleagues, I, I don't want to necessarily depend on, on the state of Texas to make this a successful endeavor. I mean, that, that was part of the, of the thought going behind the economic...
We can't.
Yeah, development fund. I mean, if we're dependent on the state of Texas, you know, we, we don't, as it is, we don't get the Texas Enterprise Fund. You know, we, we don't, you know, see any benefits from any sort of large job creation initiatives here, they typically go to other cities. And, and also, I, I hear, I hear what they're saying about the city's contribution, but, you know, when, when we look at the economic development deals recently that have come across our desks, you know, the city has put up a substantial amount of funding when it comes to this and that's their prerogative, you know, they have... And that's their prerogative, you know, they have spent a lot. But I think we have been the beneficiary of that. You know, when we look at our sales tax revenue, I think just this month, we saw the largest increase that we've seen in some time. And so we're certainly benefiting from that. And I think when we look at the price tag of this, four hundred and seventy-five thousand, you know, I think it's an opportunity for the county to step up. You know, something I hear often is that the county isn't doing its fair share or the city feel that it's doing more than the county when it comes to these. And, and that may be true, but again, that's the city's prerogative. They want to put up so much for, for incentives. But I think this is a very reasonable amount considering the benefit and it won't be paid out unless it's successful.
That's right.
And, you know, and then also, you know, like the fact that there are credits that are given, you know, in the event that they exceed, you know, a revenue target. And I think that's also a benefit for the community. So I, I mean, I hope it's something that we can, we can do fairly quickly. I, I do want to give you all the ability to start, you know, recruiting. But I, I think that, you know, if we were to get a flight to New York or, or Washington DC, that would position us very well, you know, for BRAC and other things that are coming up.
So if we were to do this, where would we, I mean, we have to earmark the money from somewhere. I just don't know if the Economic Impact Fund is, or is there any?
Well, we wrote the policy, we wrote the policy specifically to be able to cover, if the court wanted to consider using it for this type of program. It's written in the policy that it could be used for this purpose.
Just so that we have it and we know that we have it.
And then what we would do is, is from a budget perspective, we would basically encumber the money.
Is there objection to utilizing that fund?
I think it's something we can explore. But I, I hope, I do hope, I mean, I think identifying the funds is, I mean, I think in terms of committing, I think we do know we have the funding somewhere. It's just a matter of finding it. But I think, you know, giving a pledge would certainly assist their efforts to, to let them do what they need to do. And, you know, the other thing too that was raised about the private sector contributions, it's, you know, we know just from our tax base that we do have a comparatively weak private sector. And, and, you know, it's these types of initiatives that we try to do to, to reverse that trend. But, you know, I think having flights to New York and DC would significantly, you know, assist not only with BRAC, but also job, you know, retention efforts where we try to recruit companies. It's, I think it would be very advantageous to start community.
I mean, I think that's great, but I still, I still would like to make an informed decision.
Let me, let me add one comment to follow up. My assumption is your number one competitive city in this part of the world is Albuquerque. And if companies are thinking about locating a facility in this part of the world, they're going to look at El Paso and they're going to look at Albuquerque. And Albuquerque right now already has nonstop service to New York and they've had it for a long time. They also have nonstop service to Baltimore, serving the Washington area. They have twice the number of daily flights that you have here. And yet the, the difference in population between the two areas is about a hundred thousand. It's almost, they're virtually identical markets in terms of size. And so that's really kind of another thing to keep in the back of your mind is where are your competitive cities right now? And in this case, Albuquerque has twice the flights and almost twice the number of nonstop destinations. But in this case, they already have New York, they already have Washington, Baltimore. So, you know, they're in a stronger position.
They're also the largest city in their state.
True. That's true. But they do have regional airports located around the state that people can use like Roswell and Hobbs and Farmington and so forth. So, but they do grow from the state.
And I think the figure that you included doesn't, yeah, actually you include Las Cruces and Juarez and we, as you mentioned before, certain a lot of their population as well. So when you include that, we're significantly larger.
That's right.
And maybe you could go back and just have a conversation with maybe the senator's office. Get some more update on the state side of things. We're not stated to take action today anyway. And so it'll have to come back to the court. I do think it, it will be beneficial, but we need to just get some of these last bits of questions answered. And if there's any way to create some kind of matrix, which may be difficult, but just giving those tangible communities on kind of what that deliverable was, what it looked like. I know you mentioned some of them, but something on paper that we can take a look at would be helpful. And then at that point, we may have some response back from the, the city. But I mean, I do think it will be beneficial. We just need to get some questions answered. There's clearly a benefit. There's clearly a need. I don't see it not being successful, but to get some of those questions answered.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, I think you can see that there's obvious support here. I think everybody has mentioned the fact that they, that they, that they want to support the project, but there are questions that need to be answered. And, you know, like Ben said, you know, we, we can't depend on, on the state, but we at least have to try.
Sure.
And it's, I mean, time is of the essence. I mean, yeah, I, I don't think they'll reach out to the senators. He's the first person you should talk to, you know, when it comes to trying to get state money for this. So, you know, I think that, you know, it's, it would be incumbent upon you all to, to, to get that ball rolling as soon as possible because people are already filing bills in the state legislature. And, and, you know, appropriation requests are, I mean, I don't even, that's probably almost already decided. I don't know, you know, how, how far along we're on that. You know, we, we can't just, we can't just say, oh, you know, they're, you know, we can't depend on the state. No, we can't, but we can at least try. And we need to do, I think, we need to try all avenues.
True. I agree.
Any questions, commissioners? Appreciate the presentation. And we will have our chief administrator work with you to have the item come back to the for the commissioners' court in the next several weeks.
Okay.
For a vote.
Probably, and what, what is the timeline? What, when, when is the timeline that they need the pledge by?
Well, we had, the timeline that we had discussed with the judge and the commissioners is that we would like to have a decision made before the new judge takes office. So I know that's at the end of December, right? Is when the switches. So hopefully, you know, early December would be a good time to have that meeting. You know, early to mid-December, I'd say, before you get into the holidays. Great. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Are there any items that can go on Monday's agenda, like the hunters?
Could we postpone any of your items until Monday?
Well, the one I wanted is pay claims and that doesn't require a lot unless you all have any issues. Just wondered if like the.
I don't want.
In the monthly, you're talking about the quarterly?
The quarterly.
Maybe they move.
We wanted to delay that. We can do that.
Okay.
It's your, but pay claims, seriously, we mail them out by one thirty, so unless you all have issues. Yeah, if we could move that to the Monday meeting.
If you make a, we need a motion and a second to postpone the procedure or?
You can, you can take no action here and I'll just go ahead and I'll roll it over. That's fine.
You have to read it, read it in if you're going to take that.
We can do that up there again, but we'll, we'll go ahead and take that route. We'll move that to Monday. Can we do number two?
We're going to, we're going to pay it. I can do the big thing.
We are going to do the big thing. Thank you.
He wants it done by one thirty.
Okay. Item number two. Item number two, who says the Texas local government showed section one one five from O two one, audit and settle all accounts against the county shown on the attached listing and direct payment of those accounts. Any questions?
Any others?
Any questions on the backup commissioners? Here now I make a motion to approve. Second. Commissioner Bettes?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stoudt?
Aye.
Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Judge Roe?
Aye.
Motion killed.
Thank you.
Item eight.
Eight?
Yes. Item number eight, receive a presentation of SBI presence findings and provide feedback and recommendation on how the information technology department will begin to implement their new five-year strategic master plan.
We only need about five hours.
You joke, but it's probably true.
Oh, yeah.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners. My name is Lee Curtis. I'm with SBI Presence. My office is in Sacramento, California. We're about seventy-five miles south of Paradise. And needless to say, Northern California is facing a, a amount of challenge right now. So I'm very happy to be here. When I start taking a look at what I wanted to talk about today, I was reminded that my kids and grandkids say, is granddad going to talk? And I said, yeah, well, we're going to be here all day, but I promise you that this is going to be brief. So the slides that I produced today are really a high-level, executive level of the activities that we have been performing for the county over the last year relative to information technology. The project objective, when we first set out, this is pretty typical when we look at IT plans and technology roadmaps. I think this chart does a good job of looking at the technology demand in the light blue arrows. And you can see that over time, the demand continues to increase. And some people would argue that that demand is even steeper than this chart demonstrates. But at any rate, we all know that the demand for technology continues to increase at a substantial level. The dark blue arrow labeled current capabilities indicates, you know, the status of your infrastructure and the support organization that you have. And over time, without an investment of a lot of money and resources, that capability continues to decrease. At best, it stays constant. It stays level. The objective of the IT plan and what we set out to do here was to take a look at the gap between the capability and the demand. And we look at that kind of from three perspectives. The people resource, the process, what you're doing with technology, and then the technology itself, whether that be hardware or software. So I think this does a good job of laying out what we set out to do a year ago as we looked at the IT to technology plan for the county. The challenge that you're faced and any organization faces today is that technology is complex. There's nothing simple about the operation of technology. If you look across the top of this particular slide, you'll see a lot of factors that are driving technology. Technology has become mission critical. You don't do your job without technology today. And I challenge you to look around the room. Look at what you're doing with technology today. And each one of you have a cell phone or another mobile device that's certainly more powerful and has more capabilities today than the first computer that I started programming on so many years ago. So we have all of this input or all these factors driving technology today. And there is a lot of technology that's currently on the drawing board. Software is being developed as we speak. New hardware is being developed as we speak. You're going to want to take advantage of all of that two, three, four years of now. You're going to have to have the resources and the infrastructure to support it. And through it all, we only have so much resource and we all know that. There's only so many people. There's only so many dollars. There's only so much equipment and software. They have all this, all these factors driving the use of technology. And the IT department, on the other hand, is grappling with what they are and what kind of services that they should be providing. If you look at the bottom portion of this slide, you'll see that the IT organization is morphing into a service broker. Before it was a provider. Software was developed in the back room. Programs were created. People use those programs. But as we've migrated over the past few years out to the cloud, vendors are providing services as a service. The IT organization has now become more of a broker rather than a provider of services. So the middle is where we focus. The big cloud there that says informal process of IT governance, that's the challenge. What we need to see is a very formal governance structure to manage all of these factors and to provide guidance to the IT organization on how to provide service to the county. So we set out to help you define an overall vision, develop a plan. We gathered user requirements. We helped define service levels. And now we're recommending that you put a formal governance structure in place to manage the use of technology over time. Management of technology has changed dramatically. It's no longer what the technicians want, but rather it's what the business wants. And the IT governance structure provides you with that mechanism to help prioritize the projects and the resources that you use in the IT department that meet your business objectives. Business must drive technology. So our focus throughout all of the planning processes that we put together for the county is looking at that governance structure, improving it, building the mechanism that you can help guide technology to meet your needs, the county's needs. I want to spend a couple of minutes going over the process. I want to talk about the components of the plan. I'm not going to get down into the deep tactical items within any of our documents, but I wanted to paint a little bit of a picture for you this afternoon. One of the components that we went through was a voice of the user survey. This provided an online survey to everyone that has a log-on ID within the county. We had a series of questions that we asked. We asked for their responses. And then we produced a report back to the county with all of that detail. We didn't pass particular judgment on any of the comments, but we did share the results of that survey back with the county. We had six hundred and seventy-three responses and you can see by that graph, it covered all facets of the organization, from elected officials to staff members to managers and directors. Overall, your IT organization scored very high. And they scored high in their overall performance of their day-to-day activities. The hours of service were adequate to all of the people that use technology. People liked the level of response that they got to their problems. Communications, internet access and spam and unwanted email have been controlled adequately. We did notice some areas of lower level of user satisfaction, particularly on Wi-Fi availability and access to communications in our remote facilities. Some of the outlying offices, some of the other buildings provides a challenge for connectivity into the network and for cell phone usage. And overall, there was a concern expressed by many departments that IT needs to do a better job in understanding the business objectives of the departments. There again, this is moving the IT organization out of the back room operations to more of a business function. And it's noticed by the departments today, as they say, IT or ITD department needs to get a bigger focus on what we do, the departments, in conducting our business day in and day out. Overall, survey very positive. The delivery of services from the IT organization extremely positive. The second component of our IT strategic plan has to do with something we call the IT assessment. It gives us an opportunity to look beneath the covers within the IT organization itself. We use a best practices maturity model to gauge this performance. This chart demonstrates the various levels that we look at. If an organization is something less than twenty cent, twenty percent compliant to best practice, we would call it a frontier IT organization. Often we see those with organizations that are brand new or have very limited resources. They can't spend a great deal of time in worrying about best practices. They're just trying to keep the lights on. Organizations that are somewhere between twenty and fifty percent compliant to best practices, we classify as reactive organizations. A, a, a good way to characterize a reactive organization is a firefighting organization. When a problem is encountered, they go about fixing it. But there's no planning. There's no forethought. There's no root cause analysis to try to avoid those problems in the future. That's where the proactive organization comes in. Somewhere between fifty and eighty percent compliance to best practices, they're thinking ahead. They're planning. They're waiting for that, getting ahead of the curve, getting ahead of the problem. And then finally, the eighty to ninety percent compliance to best practice organization are those organizations that are aligned with the business need. are those organizations that are aligned with the business needs of the county. And finally, integrated, all of the systems talk to each other. There's a lot of data that's available. Management can make decisions based on the data that's available. There's analytics, there's business intelligence. All of these systems have now come together, are integrated, and the data is available to all of you for your decision-making process. I like this slide because it talks a little bit about the difference between reactive and proactive organizations. Reactive organizations events are problems, and proactive organizations events are opportunities. As I indicated earlier, the work focus is firefighting in reactive organizations. Proactive organizations are committed to improving service over time. The goal of reactive organizations is to survive. The goal of proactive organizations is to thrive. I want to go back to this slide now with that in your mind and say, okay, you're asking yourself the question, where does El Paso IT fall into this best practices conformance chart? Well, you'll see that the county conformance is just slightly under 50%. So you're running right on the border between a reactive and a proactive organization. We've done a lot of my IT master plans for cities, county governments throughout California, Arizona, Nevada, Oregon. The average that we see for best practice conformance is around 45%. So the county is certainly better than what we've seen. Is there room for improvement? Absolutely. Our target that we look at for best practices conformance is 65%. The recommendations that we make in our IT assessment document help you move towards that 65% best practice. Over time, you'll get to 65, then you'll start shooting higher into the light green and the integrated part into the dark green. But for now, suffice it to say that your IT organization is doing well, and with the recommendations that we've made, you have the opportunity to move solidly into the proactive level of conformance. This chart helps you understand where you are relative to performance to best practices. We look at six major areas. We look at the information governance structure, we look at service delivery, business applications. We do an evaluation of security and data protection, and finally, IT administration. Policies, procedures, inventories, those kinds of things. And then we also make an overall average of the total of those particular dimensions. The bars in green show where you are fully compliant today. The light yellow is substantially conformant. Processes are in place, they may need to be a little updated, they may need to be a little more refined, but at least there has been attention made, and IT organization is substantially conformant. The orange is minimally conformant. Certainly, they're aware of many of the situations, but resources haven't allowed the IT organization to address it. And finally, red is non-conformant. So I think overall, if you look at that, I think you say, ah, that's pretty good. It is good. Particularly when you consider fully compliant, substantially compliant, add those together, now you can see where we end up with about 50% of overall compliance to best practices. There's room for improvement. Our recommendations that we put forth in the IT assessment and the strategic plan address ways that the IT organization and the county can improve each one of those dimensions. This chart demonstrates the areas of recommendations that we focus on. If you look in the dark green in the upper left-hand quarter, high impact, low difficulty, high priority. Those are the sweet spot for recommendations. We try to identify those that would have a high impact to the organization, are really important to both IT and the business, but are particularly difficult to implement. So as many of those as we can identify, we did. We also identified some that are in the upper right-hand corner, which are high impact, high difficulty. And you'll have to approach with caution and additional resources, but the payback is significant. Recommendations in the lower portion, low impact, low difficulty, low priority, you might do a few of those, often characterized as low-hanging fruit. You might do a few of those, you might implement those quickly. Not a huge business impact, but it might build momentum. It might give you some successes that you need. And we try to avoid the ones in the bottom right, low impact, high difficulty, and low priority, because that's almost a waste of resources. But there may be political or other reasons that you need to address those recommendations. But we find a focus on the upper left-hand with a few exceptions to the lower left-hand. In summary, our recommendations focus on these points. Implement IT governance. IT governance at a very high executive level, made up of the county administrator and department heads, that can help direct the use of technology, can help establish priorities that meet the business needs. We also are making recommendations relative to the creation of subcommittees for key business applications such as MUNIS and ODYSKY. We want to be sure that you create and maintain a vision and communicate that vision to all the employees. So everyone buys into the whole process of why we're using technology and how we're going to help the community through use of that technology. Other recommendations that we made had to do with collaboration and communication. We spent a lot of time talking to departments. We met with every department in the county, time and again. What we heard from them is, all I need is to be told, I need to be communicated. As long as my problem isn't being addressed, as long as it's being worked on, and you've heard me, I'm happy. But talk to me, communicate with me. So our recommendations are focused on collaboration and communication. We want to establish and maintain priorities. That is so key to the whole process that you'll have to continually revisit priorities, update them, and maintain those. You have a limited resource in IT, you have a limited resource in your departments. So the governance structure has to be built so they can help manage the resources to apply them on the areas that need them the most. The organization needs to embrace organizational change. That's a significant trend today, and I can't emphasize it enough. Often, we implement software and say, we're going to put the software in, we're going to do our processes the same as we've always done. But you're not getting the return on investment from the software that you need to get the return on investment. You need to be willing to modify your business process. Make the software work for you, don't work for the software. Be consistent, follow the plan, but you're going to have to maintain it and update it. We really pride ourselves in developing a plan that you can use. This isn't the end. Quite frankly, this is the beginning. You have to be able to take the strategic plan, the IT assessments that we did, and the recommendations that we've created, and work with them. This is a baseline, this is a place to start. And now that you've got a place to start, you're going to have to be willing to continually update it. Things are actually going to get done, so cross it off the list. Things are going to change, you'll have to make those modifications. You're going to want to add new projects, add the projects, leave priorities, reshuffle the deck, lay it out again, and move forward. But you're going to have to continually update, you're going to have to continually revisit. As an organization, not IT in the corner doing their wonderful work, but rather as an entire organization, you have to refocus and reshuffle. And you've got to be willing to overcome the obstacles. The scope of the activities is extensive, that's why I put this slide in. This one, you just glance at it, it's not an eye test, you don't need to know what's up there. What you need to know is those are the projects that we've identified to be implemented over the next several years. That is a lot of work, folks, there's a lot of work. And that wasn't just done out of the blue, we didn't create those projects. Those were all given to us as an advent of our interviews with IT people, our interviews with the departments, the input that we received from everyone. We put it together, we've organized it, we've shuffled it, we've laid it out over a timeline. We're going to give you the tools now that you can modify this, you can update it, you can work with it. But this just in a snapshot shows you all of the work that's ahead of you. It's exciting, it's this exciting time. And I will conclude by saying, you know, we set out to say, where are you? And I think we figured that out. We spent a lot of time talking to a lot of people. We did a survey, we did a lot of interviews, we just did a lot of talking. And then we said, where do you want to be? And I think we captured all of that. We heard from the IT organization what they want to do and what their plans are. We've heard from all the departments on either projects that they have on the drawing board or they want to get on the drawing board. You have a presentation today relative to election equipment. That was one of the projects, it's on there, it's on that sheet. So it's, we listened to you, we documented it, we've built the baseline. And then how are you going to get there? Well, that's what the plan is all about, logically, orderly, priority. That is the way to go about it. And as I said, the journey only begins. We identified where you are, where you want to go, and how you can get there. And now, it's up to you to execute. Thank you, and in closing, before I take questions, I would like to express my appreciation to Chris and to Joel for their participation in this whole process. We couldn't have done it without them. They were, they're a great asset to the county, and I appreciate everything that they've done. So with that, thank you, and I'll entertain questions.
I want to thank you for your patience.
No problem.
To a very long meeting this afternoon, so thank you for being patient. This is very detailed, it's really fantastic. You know, the IT and our administration department has been really excited about the outcome of this project because it does give us that roadmap that we so desperately needed for the many, many projects that IT is engaged in. So thank you.
My pleasure, thank you.
Commissioner, do you have any questions?
So what's next now? We've gone through this process, we have this roadmap in place that will take us to 2021, it looks like, and beyond, so what's next?
So Chris Dathes, your chief technology officer. So with this plan in hand, and once it's accepted by the court, which I'll present on Monday for formal acceptance, then we're going to publish it on the internet and allow the rest of the county to dig into it and see kind of what things that we've seen and what we can do. The very first thing we really need to do is get our governance straight. I think that was the most obvious item. So we'll be working with all the departments, we'll be working with the court to some extent to find out how they would like that to be set up and develop this overarching group that could help advise the court and myself and the administration on how best to kind of solve this riddle that was this Rubik's Cube that we've been presented of projects. And then it's just hard work, then I think it's just putting our hat down and figuring out what resources we need, what resources we want to put to bear. We have to look at timing, you know, what things are, you know, have to be done and when they have to be done versus things that can wait. It's really just, like Leon said, it's just a starting point. We've already started the process or began the initial stages of creating next year's master plan. So we've already started talking about how we're going to refresh this plan and make it be an annual event. We're not going to, we won't necessarily engage an outside agency to do that every year, but we think internally, we can make sure that it's updated, we can come back and do some reports. We can keep our finger on the pulse of our users and our community to ensure that we don't fear too far off, because things change really fast in IT. And that's why it's a great place to start, but we can't just let it sit on the shelf and die. We have to actually implement it. So I really want to thank the court for having the vision to see towards this goal. It's one that I think is extremely important for you, more than really me, because it gives you the control over what we do in IT. We're able to kind of hurt us together and bring your vision to fruition as opposed to kind of trying to pick and choose maybe the easier projects, faster projects, or just the cool projects. Do the ones that you want done and that benefit the county of El Paso. So thank you all for supporting this and making today possible.
I was going to ask about priority, but that seems to be already listed on that mega-matrix. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And our sincere heartfelt condolences to all that's happening in California, and we hope that you and your family are safe and will continue to remain safe.
We're fine, but there's a lot of people that are really suffering, they've got a tough throat ahead of them. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good afternoon. And Killer, is it possible to take the last item, item nine, on Monday?
Yes, sir.
Is that okay with the rest of the court? See, I know some members of the court have meetings at 2:00 and have not had a chance to eat. I'm not sure if they'll have a chance, but you know, you can try. Is that okay with everybody?
I mean, I know that our Thursday meeting is going to be long. We should probably expect in the future to have one, otherwise we're going to get backlogged.
As Mark talked, I mentioned to the judge that we either need to plan on longer Thursday meetings because of these items. I mean, we're not, they're, they're just, it's coming out that we have more and more topics of this that we need a work session with you all, or to either consider having a meeting more than once a month for a special work session.
And I think what we're seeing is a lot of stuff coming now over the next month and a half, you know, to try to wrap up the year and, so.
I think, and I already have like the list for December 20th, and we, I mean, I already have some items for December 20th, and we already have probably six or seven items for December 20th. But we actually took them off of today's meeting because we went through and looked which ones could wait.
We'll have to keep working on that and see if there's anything that you can do on a Monday evening perhaps.
And we're working on that too, we already, we did actually take some items and already placed them on Mondays, but yes, sir.
Should we schedule another Thursday meeting between now and December?
We looked at your, so your December 20th is your next meeting. Next Thursday is Thanksgiving, obviously. December 6th, we checked, we couldn't find a quorum, I believe. So the next, December 13th.
So we'd be having four meetings within a two-week period, Monday, Thursday, Monday, Thursday?
Um, yes. We had a special session for the 5th, yeah.
We do have the 5th, that's Project Oski.
Right.
We could add some items to that.
That would be great if you all would allocate the time, we'd really appreciate that. December 5th, so that meeting starts at 11:00, so I don't know if you want to start. We can start earlier. And the reason why Oski starts at 11 is because immediately following Oski, they're planning on doing a press conference here. The city will be approving it earlier in the day. This time we flocked, so they would be approving it earlier in the day. So if we started earlier, we could place some of the items that we have for the 20th.
Starting at 9:00?
Yes, sir.
So the 5th, Wednesday?
Wednesday, the 5th at 9:00, would you all be available?
Would you be okay with it? Wednesday, the 5th at 9:00?
Yeah. You know, what, Wednesday, the 5th? It's a medical issue, I can't get along.
Tori, how about in the afternoon, after the press conference?
I'm going the whole day.
Oh, the whole day?
Okay, I think so let's, I don't, I think so let's talk to staff and thought we'd have. Everybody here the 5th, so that's the day. Or maybe we just will have a quorum. If that's for Project Oski, that's the day they'll be here.
We'll go back and check calendars to see if there's none.
Yeah, you know, I can move suit and robe, I can, yeah, I'm okay.
You sure?
Yeah, I'm okay. Yeah, I'm okay.
I think so on the 5th?
So the 5th at 9:00? That only gives us two hours, so we can probably take like three items. Depending on how long the days.
We'll go through the items. Some of them, some of them can wait until the 20th or even, we're even discussing which ones should wait until January. There's some that are informative and there's some that are more work session-based that we need input and action on.
Okay, so we'll plan on that. And we'll go ahead and move this item nine to Monday's meeting. And we will plan for lunch if needed for Monday. I haven't seen the agenda yet, but if it goes long, we can plan for lunch.
It's about 30.
Getting longer.
Yeah.
This court right now.
There's 20 percent for executive session, two resolutions, one presentation.
We have quite a bit of public works. We have five substantial public works.
Ms. Niwa, did you have any?
No, I just came to listen.
Okay.
On Monday, we'll probably have a long item on the toddler technologies stuff. I expect all the departments are going to show up with representation.
Is that, I don't think it's on the agenda yet.
It's on executive session.
Okay, oh, perfect. That's on the court's event record. Okay, perfect.
Okay, so we'll move that up to Monday's meeting. I mean, is there, I mean, I know that we're working on the transportation items and it's really exciting. I think the court will be excited with some of the progress on that. But is there a deadline or a timeline as to why it's now?
No, sir. It's just, we were wanting to get on today, but we'll do it on Monday.
Okay. And that is the last item for today's agenda.
So before we take no action on these items and we do roll these over, item number three is pursuant to the Texas Government Code Title 10, Section 2256.003. Please accept the attached investment reports for the four quarters and 12 months ended December 30, 2018. We're taking no action on this item and rolling it over to Monday. And then item number nine, receive a presentation regarding regional transit implementation and municipal partnerships. No action? Judging?
Uh, no action.
No action, enrolling this to Monday's agenda as well.
Yes. Thank you all. A lot to do in the next several weeks.
This concludes today's meeting of 1:30.